Please call the row.
Just a reminder to indicate your physical location, Councilmember Wilcoxson.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Proton Brown.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County, good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmember Simmons.
President, attending virtually in the City of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw.
Mr. Jones Chance. Mr. Jones Chance.
President, President, City of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw.
With all present, there is a quorum.
Alright, thank you.
Council, moving on to the next item is agenda approval.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution Number 2021-189 on to the regular order of resolutions.
You add 187 to that as well? I second your motion.
Okay, cool, and I guess Resolution Number 2021-189 and Resolution Number 2021-187.
Thank you, I second both of them.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Counsel, are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard three ayes.
Aye.
Okay, Mayor Proton, did we hear you?
Yes, I said aye.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you, okay. The motion is approved. So if you'll remove that from, and where are you going to put it, Mr. Halinga?
That will fall at the end of Section 10.
Okay, thank you. So it would be F and G.
Right, F and G will move to, no, I apologize, it'll be F and H will move to Section 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is a closed session.
Is there a motion?
Were we finished with the consent agenda? Will we, were we finished?
This is agenda approval, so we just approve the agenda as amended?
Okay.
I move to go into closed session.
Because I thought we were voting on that motion to remove those two, did you have something for the agenda?
Yes, I did, I wanted to make, I wanted to make a motion to add a 10-minute discussion about the city managers and the clerks, pay raises for, at the end of the, somewhere at the end of the agenda.
Okay, with this being a, with our agenda being so full, can we put that on as an item for, a full item for the next meeting, which is next week?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Halinga, you heard that, would you put it on for next week? Thank you. Okay, is there a motion? I can't hear you.
Never mind.
I move that we go into closed session.
Is there support?
Or support.
It's been moved and supported that we go into closed session, do we need a roll call, Mr. Halinga?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Tim, excuse me, Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxson?
Yes.
Motion carries, we will adjourn to closed session at 6:08. For the member of the attendees list, we're moving to closed session, so you will need to remove yourself from this meeting, and then we will begin the regular meeting at.
Thank you, everybody, for the insight, thank you, Mr. Farah, thank you, Joe, thank you.
Thank you, all of counsel for coming early.
Counsel, now would be the time.
And if you see me standing, I've got a fly in here, that's annoying.
Okay, this is not wine, by the way, it's water, I'm just out of.
Come on, now, scan us now.
It's water, I promise.
Now would be the time to make the motion to reconvene.
I move to reconvene in an open session and ask for a five-minute recess. Or.
It's been moved and supported to have, to reconvene in open session and for a five-minute recess, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's a couple people I didn't hear, ayes, I mean.
Aye.
Okay.
I want to try to get Jennifer back on here, too.
Do we have? The meeting is called to order.
Alright, counsel, the next item on our agenda at the closed session is public comments. If a member of the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand, you'll have three minutes to address counsel. The first individual is Rick, moves in, and I apologize, I know his name, but I allow him to speak now, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, yeah, I'm calling in from 101 West Michigan Avenue in regards to my liquor license application.
Sure, there is a public hearing later in the agenda, did you want to speak then?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I just, Zoom stuff's all new to me, I'm just trying to.
No problem, and once that item comes up, I'll allow you to speak.
Okay, sounds, sounds good, thanks.
Doesn't appear anyone else in the attendees list would like to, Brian Foley, raise your hand, I allow him to speak now, he has three minutes. Mr. Foley, whenever you're.
Oh, good evening, counsel, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm driving in my vehicle, I was hoping I could get parked so that I can, because I'm getting older now, I find out that I can't multitask like I used to. So, on behalf of the Frog Island Jazz Concert Series, we would like to thank the City of Ypsilanti, both government and management and labor, all aspects of government from the City of Ypsilanti for your full support. We could not have done this or pulled this off, if you will, without your support whatsoever. I want to thank the, our elected officials, our management, and in particular, I want to call out the Department of Public Works, Ron and his staff, Brad Holman, Gary. I could go on and on and saying each individual, if I had the time, who supported us. The DPW, I mean, they went well beyond of what their duties are, and I know that I'm qualified to say this, as been working with those guys for 10 years, but the support that the DPW gave us, we could not have done it without. I mean, I made my backdoor calls, and I'll say that, and I do have personal phone numbers, and each time these guys came out, I mean, they were instrumental in making this happen. This was a 10-week series, and it went off without a hitch, literally. We had speed bumps, if you will, that we hit, but we were able to get over them, we didn't really have any obstacles whatsoever in our way, and we couldn't have done that. Like I said, this was a 10-week series, and it was completely incident-free, and I literally want to say that. The last concert, we had two gentlemen who kind of wanted to have a little bit more fun than everybody else, and they were a little complicated, inebriated, and they became disruptive to other concertgoers, and we had to call the city's police department. But the way that these two and the officers handled them, I mean, they handled them with professionalism, they treated them as human beings and respect, and they were able to remove them for the property completely incident-free. So the police department, I want to thank you, and the DPW workers, and in particular, the City of Ypsilanti, but more importantly, the citizens of Ypsilanti, we could not have done this without your support and everything that you have done with us. So once again, on behalf of the Frog Island Jazz Concert Series, we want to thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Foley, appreciate that.
Counsel, the next individual with a hand raised is Valerie Brown Tewson, I allow him to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel, conducting business in the city should be open and honest for your constituents and the city. I said that to say this, open rebuke is better than secret love. I was pleased with the vote to add three police officers to the YBT, to the Ypsilanti Police Department, but I was not pleased with how the vote came about. One must be pointed. One, one must be pointed in their decision-making. When one is voting, your yea should be your yea, and your nay should be your nay. The Bible says a double-minded man or woman is unstable in all of his or her ways. Counsel, you were deceived by the mayor's vote. She voted to, 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 to add police, and when she thought the mic was off, she agreed with Mr. Morgan. She gave a deceiving vote, making you believe she was with you. Jesus said, in His word, "You are either with me or against me." She said that she voted for the city because she didn't want the city to be sued. I find that hard to believe, because when the mayor's seat was up for grabs, listen to me, y'all, when the mayor's seat was up for grabs, she thought that Nicole was gonna get it, so she retained an attorney to sue if she didn't become mayor. This is very, very, very deceitful, and you all should not tolerate this kind of behavior. I told Beth Bisher, with all the behavior that she was carrying on, I told her one night, 99 days for the thief, and one day for the watchman. It only takes the watchman one day to catch you. You can do all you want to do in 99 days, but it only takes the, the watchman one day to catch you. You all should not put up with this kind of deceiving attitudes, making you guys believe that she's with you, and when the mic, when she thinks the mic is off, she talks to brother, brother Morgan, and agree, and tells him he's agreed with everything he said, that gentleman was pointed in what he was doing. He was very pointed.
Mr. Tewson, Mr. Tewson, thank you very much for your remarks, and I just want to say that scripture also says to judge not, but thank you for coming, and I appreciate you coming and speaking, and speaking openly with us, but your time is up, the three minutes is up, Mr. Halinga, next, please.
Counsel, that was the last individual with their hand raised.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone in the attendees list that would like to make comments, this is your last chance. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation. It is a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation sponsored by Mayor Richardson. I'll go ahead and read that now. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a commemorative week first introduced in June of 1968 by California Congressman Georgie Brown, and whereas President Lyndon B. Johnson followed by declaring Hispanic Heritage Week nationally in that same year, and whereas in 1988 President Ronald Reagan expanded the declaration to a month, and whereas the Hispanic-American population has grown to be over 60 million in the United States, and makes up the largest minority group in the nation, and whereas the Hispanic community has made a great impact on the nation through their contributions in art, food, music, religion, and service, and whereas Hispanic and Latinx makes up 5.6% of Michigan's population, an increase from 4.4% in 2010, and whereas Michigan is fortunate to have a large population of Hispanic-Americans that have impacted its economy through business growth, innovative ideas, job creation, and many other contributions that affect the daily lives of Americans, and whereas it is important to highlight and recognize achievements of Hispanic-Americans as they continue their efforts in enhancing our communities. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim September 2021 as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mr. Halinga.
And so if you're ready to move on to the next item, we have a public hearing for redevelopment liquor license for 101 West Michigan Avenue. Resolution Number 2021-174 was all by the counsel of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas Ricker Chocolate LLC has applied to the Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority, City of Michigan, Ypsilanti, and Michigan Liquor Control Commission requesting the bowing, approval of a redevelopment Class C license, MCL 436.1521A1B, with a dance entertainment, outdoor sales, and Sunday sales permits. A Class C license as defined by MCL 436.11072 will allow the license to sell at retail beer, wine, mixed spirit drinks, and spirits for consumption on the premises at 101 West Michigan Ypsilanti, Michigan 48197, Washtenaw County, and whereas a public hearing to consider the applications of, to Class C license, MCL 4361521A1B, for Ricker Chocolate LLC was duly noticed and held on September 14, 2021. Now therefore, be it resolved, but the request of Ricker Chocolate LLC owner of the property located at 101 West Michigan be approved contingent upon building department approval and issuance of a certificate of occupancy as well as Washtenaw County Health Department approval.
I should move.
It has been moved, is there a second?
Four.
It's been moved and supported.
Counsel, and the applicant was in the list, it appears that they are no longer on, but, oh, there he is, I will allow him to speak now, in case you have any questions for him. Prior to that, I will let counsel know that this was originally approved in March of 2021. There was an issue with the application from the MLCC, and then, as I described in the RFL, additional special permits were asked, so rather than just put this kind of redo on the consent agenda, I thought it'd be fair to allow for another public hearing since the permits, permit requested is still.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Yeah, I just, the MLCC wanted the application switched into the restaurant operator LLC name, and we had applied in the LLC of the, that the building is owned in, because we were under the impression that the DDA liquor license was supposed to be attached to the building, so it's just a mishap, I guess, with MLCC.
Yes, your hand. Mr. Muszinski, is he the speaking?
Okay. Yeah, he was, he was the owner, and the applicant did sum up, sum up what this request is based off of. If counsel's ready, Mayor, if you'd like to open the public hearing, if you don't have any questions for the applicant.
Alright, counsel, do you have any questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Okay, see, no, are there any hands for the public hearing?
No, it does not appear that anyone wishes to make comment. So.
Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
They moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Any discussion on the original motion? Okay, see, no discussion, Mr. Lingo, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons? Oh, she was. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, one no, and one absent.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to the next item is ordinance number 1380, an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 106, Article 5, Section 106, 454A of the Court of Ordinances to Adjust Sewer Disposal Rates. Resolution Number 2021-176 was all by the counsel of the City of Ypsilanti that an ordinance to amend Chapter 106, Article 5, Section 106, 454A of the Court of Ordinances, City of Ypsilanti, to adjust sewage disposal rates approved on first reading.
I'll move, or?
Been moved and supported. We will have Zierkis' presentation on this.
Yes, counsel, Mr. Castro and Mr. Harrigan are here from Yucca.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Castro.
Good evening, counsel, how are you?
Very well, how about yourself?
Great, great, great to see everybody.
Same here.
So, yes, on its regular meeting, August 25th, the YCUA Board of Commissioners approved a recommendation to the city council for these rate adjustments, a water rate increase of 2% and a sewer rate increase of 2%. The two draft ordinances which accomplish these changes are before you tonight for your consideration. Also included is budget highlights related to the YCUA September 1st fiscal year's budget. The combined effect of these rate adjustments will be a 2% increase on a city division customer's bi-monthly water and sewer bill. Information detailing this effect is included in your material. A city division average user of 10 units will see an increase of $2.47 on a bi-monthly water and sewer bill, or $1.24 per month. The Great Lakes Water Authority, where we receive our water from, has increased its rate to YCUA by 2.01%, and has already went into effect on July 1, 2021. The Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees also approved these adjustments at their board meeting on August 17, 2021. In conclusion, YCUA is asking if you're considering for these two rate adjustments effective October 21, 2021. I've also included some other community rate comparisons in your packet as well. As a comparison, Ann Arbor has increased their rates 5.05%, Dexter has increased their rate 5%, the City of Birmingham 5.7%, Calabazoo 12%, this is one of our lowest increases in the last 12 years. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Steve, the councilman, welcome, his hands up. Are you muted?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I was, I was muted, let me take this moment, Mr. Halinga, I sent you a.
Yes, I can't, I can't allow that person back in.
No, the person that left when you asked them to leave, she left, she's the one that's not getting back in.
There's, there's nothing that I can do, I, the only person that I didn't, that I had removed, so I'm not sure what they're trying to do, they might be going in.
Oh, it's not the person, it's not the person that you removed.
I understand that, I can't do anything for that, this person, they're getting, they're either using the wrong link. But, yeah, I, I, there's nothing I can do for, with this offer.
I just wanted to let you know that their, their last bloom up, blowing up my texts to say that the one that let, that you, that left voluntarily can't get back in, okay. Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxson?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Castro. You know, we've talked before about, you know, every time this comes up, I wonder how this impacts our constituents, and I, and I see the comparison, you know, comparing this to, to various other cities, and it's simply, you know, much, much lower than that. It, it seems like we're at the will of the Great Lakes Water Authority, and 2% doesn't sound like much, but is there a long-term plan that, that they have and that you are part of that, that addresses the affordability of water and sewage rates for, for constituents?
Good question, well, the Great Lakes Water Authority, you know, they look at their budget every year, and they're always constantly updating their infrastructure, which rolls down to all of us 128 contract communities that purchase water from them. So as long as everybody's, as long as the Great Lakes Water Authority continues to upgrade their system, they're gonna pass on that debt to all of us contract communities, as YCUA does the same, as we upgrade our system, you know, we have, we have to pay for those bonds as well, so it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, but we do the best we can, we believe we manage our finances very well, and that, and that's pretty much the bottom line on the Great Lakes Water Authority, yes, we kind of are at their helm, like you say, but their current management, with all due respect, has been fourth, fourth front, very upfront with us, and have been doing a very good job, I think, on passing on minimum water increases. What also affects YCUA on our increases is how well that we operate our system. As everybody knows, we have 16.25 million gallons of storage, so during the hot summer days, when utilities without storage are pulling really hard from Detroit and putting a strain on their system, we isolate the valve from Detroit, and we pull from my storage to alleviate the stress from the Great Lakes Water Authority. Then when everybody goes to bed, and the stress is less on the Great Lakes, then we open our valves, and we fill our tanks for the next day, so that helps us as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
How you doing, Mr. Castro?
Hello there.
Besides fiscal responsibility, what would you say is one of the other leading contributing factors to us only being raised by 2%, which is still, is still an amount, but in relative to other municipalities around us, what's keeping ours and in the reserve, what's keeping our water and keeping our rates at such a level that is not 13 or 12% like Calabazoo or other places?
Again, it's, it's all about how we operate our system, and then how many upgrades we do every, every few years. As you know, we, we are constantly doing projects to upgrade our system, you see what's happening right now on, on West Cross, and, you know, we are, we're not, we're not pretty much, we're pretty much not holding back on the projects that are needed for our water and sewer system, we are continuing to do that. We did, we operate our system very well, we operate our waters, our water distribution system very, very well, and it looked upon by other communities as how we run it, and, you know, some, something looking forward to what's happening out in the world is the lead in copper, so YCUA moving forward like we're doing on Cross right now, as Cross Street is, we're now responsible to replace, as I, I think I've discussed this with city council. we're now responsible to replace, as I think I've discussed this with City Council before, we're responsible to replace all that services from the home all the way to the, to the water main, which is highly unusual. That's all private property. But we're doing that pretty diligently. We're pretty experienced. We're, we're expertise at this and we're keeping the cost very, very well during this project. But to answer your question, it's, it's how we operate our system, our water and sewer system.
Thinking forward, thinking in regular maintenance. Thank you so much, Mr. Castro.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Will Coxon?
All right, come back to this. I'm just very hyper aware of the optics here in that, you know, we had flooding with a lot of sewer, sewer backups earlier in the summer, and I can hear these voices coming to, to me. It's like, and we did that and now we have a two percent increase in our sewer rates. You know, I, I know that the, the systems are being upgraded, but that's there. And I'm, I'm going to certainly get those comments from other people and I have gotten those, so.
I'd be, can I comment on that? Give me some feedback. That's a very good question. I'm glad you actually brought that up. So we're talking about the June twenty fifth, twenty sixth rain event. The city received six inches of rain. There isn't a wastewater system in the state of Michigan or the whole United States that is capable of taking on six inches of rain. It's a massive amount of rain. It's, 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 it's about two, two, two months of rain and twenty four hours. Systems are not designed to handle that. It's unfortunate. And that's just, that's the honest answer to that. However, I mean, as you know, a lot of the city storm drains also backed up in the streets. It's not that your system is, 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 is bad. It's overwhelmed from the rain. Your system is not designed for that. It either is ours or anybody else's system in the entire state. However, we are looking at the areas that did have backups. And we had one subdivision in the city that backed up and we, we had looked into that. And we will be discussing this in the future because the subdivision in question, all of their floor drains, their storm tiles in their basements are all tied into the sanitary system. And that's something we're going to have to discuss because that's, that, that's not, and that's not in the code. But it was approved by the city years and years ago and their grandfathered in. But those systems get overwhelmed from, from that as well. So it's something we need to discuss. So I'm really happy you brought that up and I'll be more than happy to discuss that more with you and City Council moving forward.
I would very much like that, yes. Mr. Will Coxon, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, just saying thank you.
Yeah. Right, I would very much like, if you would, at a future date, if we could arrange for you to, you know, share more about that with us, be, you know, so that we know if there, if there is or isn't anything we can do to make a change or how to make it better or so if we can arrange a time for you to tell us more about our storm drain, storm drainage system, storm and sewer drain system. Thank you.
So the, the, the storm system and sanitary system are two completely separate systems. So when you see water in the street, that's from the storm drains not being able to handle the water. Okay, which happened in many streets in the city during that rain event. And then, and that's particular subdivision, we had a, a, a large amount of homes that did have backups. And the correction to that would be to dis, disconnect the, their drain tiles from our sanitary system. And that's, you know, that's a, another task. Our sewer system in that area is, it was designed for that and if, if, if anybody drove through that subdivision, you can see that it wasn't house to house that backed up. You could see four houses were okay, then three backed up. Then the house across the street didn't back up, but a couple houses down the road backed up. That's a clear indication of the sewer leads in between the home and the sewer main being overwhelmed by rainwater. And that's because of the, of the drain piles in the basement. When, when, when you have a complete sanitary system failure, like you see in Detroit, with all due respect, and Dearborn, every house backs up. That didn't happen here at YCUA. But I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, absolutely.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the issues were with individual homes?
The issue is with, with all those homes, all their drain tiles are tied into the sanitary, every single one of them. And that's just something we're going to have to discuss in the future, potentially disconnecting between, you know, city YCUA and, and, and the Washington Drain Commission. We're all going to have to get together and sit down with that. But it's not an easy answer because if they disconnect it, they're going to disconnect and tie into your storm system and your storm system can't handle all that rain either. So if you have more of those drain tiles tied into your storm system, it's not going to handle it. So basically, we're, we're, we're alleviating one problem and giving, giving you another problem. And that's not a feasible, that's not a feasible answer either. So that's why we got to discuss this. And it's, it's the infrastructure. It is what it is. And they weren't designed for that amount of rain. If you notice, we had several rain events after the fact and nobody backed up when, when, and when Detroit, Dearborn, Livonia, they were all backing up again. We had no more backups other than that six inches of rain. So our system did its job, but it's unfortunate. It's nothing to brag about. But it's, it's something to talk about and I'm really glad you brought that up so I can help educate everybody, have everybody understand really what's happening here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Take that. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you. Mr. Lingo, would you call the roll, please?
Council, first you have to, this is an ordinance, so it does have a public hearing, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
If any.
Like hearing?
If anyone in the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand. It would be specific to this ordinance. Then you'll have three minutes to address counsel. Council seeing no, no hands raised, if you'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public.
Okay, thank you.
For.
It's been moved and seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is closed.
All right, Council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hulanga, go ahead.
Well, I was asking if Council was ready for me to call the roll on the determination?
Is there any more questions or discussion? Are you ready to vote?
Do we even call the question?
All right, no stand, no hands. Please call the roll.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absent?
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next item. This is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One Dash Four and Seven Eight, resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsilanti that an ordinance to amend Chapter One Zero Six, Article Five, Section One Zero Six, Four Five Four B of the Court of Ordinances to increase water rates within the City of Ipsilanti be approved on first reading.
So move. A support.
It's been moved and supported?
Thank you very much.
Presentation? Mr. Castro, are you coming back with us or is there someone else?
No, I'm done here. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Council doesn't have any questions? You want to open the public hearing for this ordinance?
Moved open. Do I have to do that?
The mayor would open the.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The mayor opens the public here.
Oh, okay, yes. The public hearing is open.
If anyone from the attendees lists have a question, please, please raise your hand. It'd be specific to this ordinance. I know you have three minutes to address counsel. With no hands raised, if there could be a motion to close the public hearing?
Close.
Anybody support, but only the mayor can open, huh?
Okay, I heard a, a.
A second.
I heard a motion and a support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The public hearing is now closed and we are open for a discussion on this ordinance. Do we have anyone presenting on this ordinance? Mr. Hulanga, do we have staff?
No, this would be, this is a Yucca ordinance, so if they have nothing further, there's no presentation.
Okay. All right, seeing, seeing and hearing none? Would you call the roll, please?
You're muted, Andrew.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absent.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next item, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One Dash One Zero Eight, resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsilanti, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has adopted master plan that reflects the policy goals of the city. And whereas the planning commission from time to time reviews the zoning ordinance performance with relation to these goals and general functionality. And whereas the planning commission has recommended the City Council adopt a proposed ordinance changes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ipsilanti City Council approve the ordinance entitled Residential Modifications, zoning update.
No move.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported? Any, do we have any presentation on this ordinance?
Yeah. Hi, Mayor, I can.
Hi there, Mr. AMI.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I can just do a quick summary real quick. Essentially, there's really three groups of the zoning text amendment on the table tonight. So Group One pertains to accessory dwelling units, AKA ADUs, which are smaller independent residential dwelling units located on the same lot as the principal house or building. And this amendment would make the ADUs allowed in the R one and CNSF zoning districts. Group Two pertains to relaxing the minimum lot area and minimum lot widths of pretty much all residential zones as well. And Group Three pertains to allowing two-family dwellings, duplexes on corner lots as principal permitted uses in all residential zones. All of these amendment groups are supported by the recently adopted master plan update, which aims at allowing for more housing opportunities, more flexible land use choices for property owners. And hopefully in doing so, increasing the housing stock and making housing more affordable in the city. I hope you looked at the materials and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Mr. Will Coxon?
Thanks, Andy. I, am I right in that the, the second group here, the minimum lot area is to bring certain properties that are already defined in the city into compliance with this?
Uh, it. Can you clarify that question?
Well, we have some lots that are, that are already smaller than the minimum and so this allows those to be compliant.
And that actually doesn't change already currently established lots, currently established lots before a certain date. I believe when the ordinance was originally written, are allowed to, are allowed to continue as essentially non-conforming lots is what they're called. And can, can have a house built on them. However, this pertains to dividing lots. So if somebody wanted to create a new lot out of having an extra large lot and, you know, let's say they have an eight thousand square foot lot and they want to divide it into two four thousand square foot lots, they could do so under this ordinance. Wherein, you know, currently, without this ordinance, that person could not create, you know, a four thousand square foot lot.
Thank you. And the first one, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks, a lot of my constituents have, have been clamoring for ADUs and R one for a while. Some other folks may or may not like it. There was one email that we got from George Haggenhour, who, who seemed to be making the point that some of these accessory dwelling units could, could block out the sun in terms of solar. And, and I think that got into an issue of, you know, what your neighbor does impacts you. If you put up solar power and they build a building that blocks out the sun, then, then you're, you're kind of out on that. But I, you know, it appears to be a question of taking, you know, if, if you could regulate that and keep somebody from doing that, then that, that appears to be a taking in that case. So I, I don't have concerns about that. I just wanted to bring it up here because that was the only complaint about this that I got, so.
Okay, Mr. Will Coxon, can I ask what you mean by a taking?
I would rather have Joe explain that or Andy.
Thank you.
So. I'll let Joe try to answer this one. I'm not really familiar with a taking from a private property to another.
Yeah, so, so essentially, we, the city is not allowed to take a private citizen's property without undue burden or rationale. And so it gets into a point where if we were to overregulate somebody unreasonably, then that would, that, that could cause for taking. It's normally when a, a local government like zones out something lately, which we don't do. However, to, to go off of what Mr. Walcox had, had indicated, according to Mr. Haggenhour, he wanted the, the neighbors to have a say in what somebody did with their property, so a direct say. So it was a, a neighbor can, can say yes or no. And that's where we, if we adopted an ordinance authorizing that, I, I feel like that could get into that territory because you're not using rules or rationale behind it. You're using a neighbor's feelings.
Do we have? Is, does this include height on the, on the accessory buildings? Is there a definite limit on the height that an accessory building can be?
Yep, so on the table, there's the clarification that, that the height of the accessory dwelling unit may match, but it cannot exceed the highest point of the principal structure. So of the house on the, on the, on the property, it can't be at the highest point of the accessory dwelling and it can't be higher than the house. And then in a few other zones, it's, it's a little different. Actually, no, it's, it's that way pretty much all around, so.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. Um. Who do ADUs, like, with these ordinances, the ordinance changes, like, where did, was it, you said they were in line with the master plan? Were there's pressure to make some of these changes? Like, who does it benefit more for the ADUs to exist? The, the citizens or maybe the cities? Maybe the city being able to tax, because if they add more value to their home, that this, the city is able to tax the more, more, it's more taxable income, correct? I mean taxable value on a home, correct? Um. I was thinking about what Mr. Haggenhour sent in. I do think some way there should be a, not, shouldn't be based on neighbor's say, but they should have some factor in it. Again, you got two neighbors on each side and someone in the back. And if you built a structure, um, say a business even, because it can be used as business purposes, that's not in line with your neighbors. Not to say that they should have a final say, but at least I do think somehow, some way, I would, if I built something in my backyard and the neighbor next door. Should have a final say, but at least I do think somehow, some way, I would, if I built something in my backyard and the neighbor next door, it was totally against their views of. Personal beliefs, I do think it would be in conflict, even though it's on my personal private property. So I don't know if they should have to say, but I definitely think some rubric should be. Created that they would at least put their two cents in that could be noted for the record. And Joe, when you were saying, um, what's? Part from the train? Did you say it was a special situation? That occurs in which if the city offered a homeowner a hundred and twenty-five percent or more than. The value of their home that they can repossess it, what, what term was that we were using?
So, so there's a couple of terms that I'm not a lawyer, I'm going to be very clear. But the city through eminent domain can, can take. Properties for public use. There is a statute, I think it's, it's a legal precedent where if a government. Allows, takes a, an existing use that's allowed. And makes it non-existent through improper means, it would be considered a takings. Mr. Jones Chance, looks like he's holding his head, he probably knows this way better than I do as a real estate agent. The, the concern of letting a private property owner. Dictate what happens through zoning is an issue.
And the last thing, like, when, when, in ADUs, I'm just using, I'm just talking strictly about the first one, it's not the, the second two. But a, a person has the right to build another ADU. Not as big as the existing structure, and they can, do they have to provide information for, if they was to do it for business purposes, like a bed and breakfast, right next to their original structure? Do they have to have certain plans for what they're building to get? To get permission to do so for certain businesses beyond just a structure?
So, for the most part. You know. These are. Units just for dwelling purposes only, just for how, you know, housing, we're not. Expanding, you know, this doesn't mean that somebody can open a business in an ADU other than a. You know, a home office, let's say if they have work from home, you know, or, or have a, have a permitted home occupation. If, if the zoning district allows. You know, a bed and breakfast. Then hypothetically, you know, that is a principal structure and there could be an ADU. Built on that property, but it's for dwelling purposes only, somebody would have, have to live there, it couldn't be a. A, you know, a, a commercial business per se.
Thank you.
There, can I ask a question? So the ADUs, you're saying that they can't be built specifically for a business? But for residents only?
Correct, it's residents only, but there are just slight little stipulations in the zoning code that allow for, you know, certain like home offices, for example.
Now, does this change allow for? Mechanic, car mechanic work?
No, this would not allow car mechanics to be, you know, taking place.
Okay, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I wanted, I just want to thank some of, you know, the members from. The work group that's been working on this, including the members of the planning commission who have helped out. Matt Dunwoodie and Eric Bettis, and for the plan, and to the planning commission for, for voting this up. We did send this to them for, in the master plan update. And I don't believe any of us had an issue with it then, this is an important. Beginning point to responding to our affordable housing issues, this. In a small way will help increase the supply, it's going to allow for more housing options, and this will be done organically over time. It's going to allow some of our lower income homeowners to be able to better afford their homes if they can. You know, turn some of this into a room where a relative or a family member can live and help pay some of the housing expenses. This is also going to allow for children or younger family members to be able to. Take care of their older family members or their parents as they age. So I don't see this as being anything but good for our community. If we're thinking about ADUs in, in particular, if you've got a house. You know, if you work for an agency, you've got a house, someone who's elderly and transitioning from homelessness. Where are you going to put them? You know, you can't put them into a student housing area full of twenty year olds who are. You know, doing twenty year old things, you can't put them into a two bedroom apartment because they can't afford that. You know, this is a perfect. This is a great solution to. Several problems. And I think we need to move forward with this and with the other suggestions that will be coming in the future.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to echo what. Mr. Jones Chance just said. We, Steve and, and Brian and I, we've been working with Andy and Joe and the. Planning Commission, a small working group on this and. Obviously stemmed from the master plan update, but as. A young person in the city. Who's lucky to have an affordable apartment. This is hopefully going to help with some of the affordability issues that a lot of. You know, newly graduated college students who want to stick around YPSY or. People who want to stay closer to home while they're going to college and just young professionals will have more housing options, hopefully in the next ten years. With these changes, we obviously know, and I, Brian pointed out, you know, we have aging populations and other vulnerable populations that this will be. A pretty. Good option for them, if they want to stay near their families and age in place and for other people who are. You know, returning from, you know, various obstacles in life to be closer to support system, so I'm. Excited to see this change happen.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mayor Proton, I can't see, are you, are, do you have anything to? For this conversation? Okay, thank you. Mr. Lingo, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel, this is an ordinance and does require a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open.
Any member of the attendees list, if you wish to make comments on this, this ordinance, please raise your hand, you'll have three minutes to address counsel. Their hand raised, Valerie Brown Tucson, I'll allow them to speak now. Yeah, three minutes to address counsel.
I just want to say, counsel, I support that, Brian and. Mr. Wilcoxen and Annie were on that committee, thank you guys so much. Especially for older adults. Who are, you know, aging in place, it's, you know, you know, when you're older, I think you're happier. Closer to family, I've been through that experience with my own parents, and I think that they did exceptionally well. Having, you know, family around them as they went through the challenges in life, so I think this is a very great opportunity, it reduces the cost for families. It allows them, you know, to be able to provide that level of support, so I am one hundred percent. With, with this idea, and I hope that we can move forward in that vein.
Thank you, Ms. Tucson.
Counsel, seeing no one else with their hand raised, if you'd like to move on.
Close the public hearing?
It's been moved and supported to close the public hearing, all in favor? So I heard two ayes.
Sorry, I.
I think that I, we hit what, five? Out of the six, okay, I, public hearing is closed, thank you. Are there any other more, any other questions or comments? Or Mr. Myers or Mr. Amma? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Halinga, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to the consent agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight two. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight three, approving the minutes of August seventeen nineteen twenty-six twenty-one. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight four, approving appointments for the commissions. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight five, approving the appointment of administrative hearings bureau officer. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight six, approving the purchase of three police stateless from Gordo Ford. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eight eight, approving the subrecipient agreement between the city and Washington County for the community development block grant program. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one nine zero, approving ordinance thirteen seventy-nine, an ordinance for the zoning text amendment, adult use on second.
It's a move. Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion on this, so all in favor?
Mayor, this is a roll call vote.
This is a roll call, okay, please call the roll, thank you.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to the. Next item. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one nine one. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, and whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted a special events policy and pursuant to the. Policy, the city may co-sponsor an event if it is of general interest to the public and advances the city's public image. And whereas this year, the women and men working for change annual domestic violence walk will take place Saturday, October second in Park Ridge Park. And whereas women and men working for change is requesting that the city waive their park rental fees for the twenty twenty-one domestic violence walk. And whereas the city council agrees that waiving park rental fees for the twenty twenty-one domestic violence walk will be in the general interest of the public. And advance the city's public image. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves their request to waive park rental fees for the twenty twenty-one domestic violence walk in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Thank you.
I believe we have a presentation on that, Lisa Jones. Could you promote her to? Panelist status, please. I think she's on the list as only Lisa.
I'm actually not able to, something's going on with my Zoom. If Joe is still on, if you could allow them to speak. I'm going to have to log off and log back on, something keeps happening with my Zoom.
All right, thank you. Joe, are you able? Lisa. She's on the attendees list, this is Lisa, her name is Lisa Jones.
She, she should be able to speak now.
Hello, good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, thank you, thank you again for allowing me to come on and share what we are trying to do. On behalf of women and men working for change, this is our fifth year in business, we are a nonprofit organization. And we worked very hard to get where we are right now. Everything that we do is solely from fundraising and from out of our pockets and donations from here. And there for the people who support us. The domestic violence walk, this is our fifth year in existence doing it, it's a very, very wonderful event that we do, we have speakers that come out. We provide breakfast, a light breakfast, continental breakfast, donuts. Bagels, coffee and juice that's also donated to our walkers and supporters who come out. In turn, with the funds that we make, we always provide some type of donation to a family within the community that's in need. Mostly, we try to provide services. For, of course, women or either a man that's been in a domestic violence situation. In the past, we have donated to the shelter and we do also give. Inboxues or letters or sometime inquiries from random people needing different things. We also have another event that we do, which will be our third year this year called Christmas Dinner in the Community, which goes really well. We provide a, a home cooked meal. The day, two days before Christmas to the community at no cost to them. And we fed up to two hundred people during that event. We also do another event called Totes for Teachers, where we provide a tote. Which entails two hundred and fifty dollars worth of supplies for whatever teacher. Is listed. And they, they, they give us a list of what they need and we fill the totes and we present the totes to the teachers. So. The walk this year, because of the COVID and different things like that, we were unable to do as many fundraisers that we was, that we would like to. You know, to do the event, and prior, prior to this one here, we've done it at the North Bay Park, we keep everything in the Ypsilanti community area. So we're just asking, I'm asking on behalf of the entire group, if we can get the fees waived for that part for the event.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, counsel, any questions or discussion? Are you ready for the vote?
I just want to make a, a statement.
Yes, please.
I just think it's extremely important for families and individuals to support a cause such as this. I think if it were COVID going on, this is one of the highest. Increases in, in crime and DV in our city and just across the state, and I do think some of these families need some reprieve and. Just bringing it to our city and allowing us to support them, I can say our ground and my support. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I would just like to say, say no, no hands, that I have been attended every one of these. Walks that this group has sponsored, and in fact, I've supported them with all of their events. And they are a very faithful group of. Of young. Men and women, and I say young, I think they're both, they're used, most of them might be. Between their forty and fifty-five or somewhere in there, but certainly that, that is young. When sixty is the new forty, so we'd just like to. I saw you, I saw that smile, Mr. Mr. Morgan. I would just like to say that I do highly support them, they have done excellent work, they have worked very closely with the Assault Crisis Center. And have supported the, the center and have supported individual families. I belong to a, another, to a club that. That they have encouraged us to take on a teacher and fill a tote. And, you know, having been a teacher, but not in elementary school, but having been around enough elementary school teachers. To know that they spend lots and lots of their own money. Getting supplies for the classroom, those that are really dedicated to seeing their children get good education. Yeah, because they just don't get enough money for school supplies, so this group has been. Very faithful in doing lots of good things in the community and in particularly in the city. So I will be supporting this. This resolution. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh, Mr. Lingo with, I mean, Mr. Myers, would you call the roll, please?
I didn't realize Mr. Halinga was gone. Uh, power I know is going out, uh, some places. I don't have the roll sheet, so we'll use the, uh, uh, I'll just call out names, so it won't be as, as, as good as Mr. Halinga. Uh, Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Lois Ellen Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Pick a one, pick anyone, uh, yes.
Mr. Jones, chance?
Yes.
Council, Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Uh, with all, uh, voting in favor, uh, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will really, we really appreciate you guys' support.
You're more than welcome. And Lisa, I will certainly en- uh, encourage all of council to come out and have uh, dinner when you serve your Christmas dinner.
Thank you.
Invite us all, yes.
I'm running in that five K.
Oh, wow.
Anybody else joining? Mr. Will Coxon, are you joining the walk or the run?
Oh, I could do the walk. I, I could do the run, sure.
Okay.
Why not?
Oh, but can you be challenged to do the run, right?
Anthony, you are challenged formally.
I'm challenged?
Challenge me, no.
Well, since you and I are now the same age, Anthony, I think, uh, I think a challenge.
I got you about three years, Stephen.
Well, if sixty is the new forty, I mean.
That's what I hear. And I would like to thank you all again on behalf of my entire team, and we look forward to seeing you guys. It's, it's awesome. We love it. And I am one of the survivors and, uh, we appreciate, and we're trying to get the word out to everybody, even our young people. Our younger people.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Okay.
Good evening. You too. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Is Mr. Halinga back with us yet?
Yes, I apologize, council. I'm, I'm not entirely certain what's going on with my computers, but my, uh, my, my Zoom keeps freezing up on me. Um, I'd like to introduce my new deputy clerk, uh, Joe Myers. You did a great job.
Ah, did a great job. Great job.
Yes, he did. Let's give him a hand. Thanks, uh, Mr. Myers, for being.
Wow, you got a promotion, Joe.
Well, that's a D motion, but that's okay.
Is it?
I was being facetious. I don't know.
All right. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one nine-two. Resolved by the council.
Oh, before you do this, please, I would like to turn the meeting over to, uh, Mayor Proton, uh, Nicole Brown.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one nine-two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted a special events policy and pursuant to the policy, the city may co-sponsor an event if it is of general interest to the public and advances the city's public image. And whereas this year, the Love is the Answer reconciliation day event will take place Friday, September seventeenth in Riverside Park. And whereas the Love is the Answer reconciliation day event organizer is requesting that the city be a co-sponsor of the twenty twenty-one event. And whereas city council agrees that becoming a co-sponsor of the twenty twenty-one Love is the Answer reconciliation day event would be in the general interest of the public and advance the city's public image. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the request to be a sponsor of the twenty twenty-one Love is the Answer reconciliation day event in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
I'll move.
There a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. So is there a presentation for us?
Yes, there is from Ms. Walcoff.
You in the audience?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
She was here.
She, she's on. Give me one moment.
I see her name on the screen.
She's, she's, she's on.
Ms. Walcoff, good evening.
Good evening, council. Um, it's delightful to be here on this stormy kind of rainy evening. Um, I'm here to request the support from council and in particular the city for the Love is the Answer Day. Um, we have had, um, slow-moving in some ways and fast-moving in other ways. Um, I'm sure you are all aware of the Walking While Black movie, um, and from that movie, the Love is the Answer program has been created. On Thursday night, there is the showing of the movie at eight o'clock. Um, and then on Friday, from two to six, there is an event or there's an event at the, um, Riverside Park. And part of that event is just going to, not is just going to, but part of that event is bringing people together. Um, the acronym, acronym LOVE is learning about people. The O is, um, going outside of your comfort zones. V is volunteering is, and E is empowerment. And as we get to know one another and we spend time with one another, then the community comes together, which is perfect for, um, Riverside Park. Cause it's in the middle of the city. We have a lovely, um, playground that is now accessible to everybody in the city. We have the, um, Black Lives Matter. So it is a park that is used. It had the amazing um, jazz series. So that park is getting to be known as very much of a community space. Um, having the event, um, the Love is the Answer event, it's the third annual event. Um, there will also be banner, a banner that is painted, um, with the idea of possibly turning into a mural or not turning into a mural, but we do have a, um, banner to be painted. We have, we will have tables there giving information out about, um, COVID testing, um, vaccines, different organizations are going to have, um, booths there. There will be food, um, and a DJ. And once again, it's from four to six. And we are asking for the waiver of the fees for the park. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, the time is two to six.
I lied. It's two to six.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Walcoff. Um, all right, are there questions from council? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm doing these two screens. Um, whoever can answer this, uh, Gail, thank you for being here, Ms. Walcoff. Um, is Love is the Answer, is that a nonprofit organization?
I do not know. I can look it up.
Oh, cause not to say we, the city doesn't want to partner, co-sponsor, but I was wondering if it was a nonprofit, why would it choose that status? That's the first thing I wanted to know. Um, and secondly, uh, this is no, I thought with the Love is the Answer, I don't know if it's an, if it's an idea, a concept, if it's a group. But I know when, when we originally had, um, when we didn't accept the, uh, the books that we were gonna buy, I think for, uh, some outstanding number, um. And I noticed that the mayor's name is on it, and that makes me kinda, uh, Mayor, why is your name? I know she stepped out, but what, what, I don't understand how she's the principal point person on this, cause I don't know what, what the mayor's affiliation. Are, are you a part of this group, Mayor? Um, can she answer on record? Is she a part of this group or just?
May I answer Mr. Halinga or Mr. Barr?
Well, she passed the gavel, so I believe you can answer. I would think so. I don't, but yes.
If, if, if council permits it, the mayor can, can address us.
Does she cannot or can?
Can.
She can, if council permits it.
Council, are you all comfortable with this, getting this feedback?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Housemember Somerville? Yep.
Did you say that again?
I was just getting, uh, consensus if folks were okay with receiving, um, the feedback to your question.
Okay.
Uh, to answer your question, Mr. Morgan, um, yes, I've been, um, the, there was a group that came to, um, the National Association of African Americans and HR were invited here in, uh, twenty eighteen, in twenty seventeen to have their con- convention or conference here in twenty eighteen. They had never heard of the city of Ypsilanti. They came. And that group is in collaboration with Walking While Black, Love is the Answer, um, group. And, uh, they work together. The principal person for the, uh, N A A A H R, um, that whole group took a real liking to the city of Ypsilanti. The principal person is from Howard County, Maryland. And then coming here and visiting the city and get, leading up to the convention and getting, uh, becoming quite acquainted with the city, they fell in love with the city. And that was back during the time when the, the come, coming together of the school districts had just happened. And there was lots of things going on. And in looking and visiting with the school districts and the superintendent at that time, Mr. Edmondson, uh, they signed a five oh one, uh, they saw, I'm sorry, they signed a MOU with, uh, Ypsilanti Community Schools. This particular man, Mr. Austin, is from Howard County, Maryland, and he, um, uh, presented to a group of us that Howard County, Maryland's schools used to be, um, on the bottom or close to the bottom. And that there was some work that a group of people coming together and committed, and they, um, uh, Howard County, Maryland schools are now in the top five school districts in the country. So they signed that MOU and created a group, uh, called the Council of Elders. And at present, we need some members for the Council of Elders, if any of you are interested. But they also worked with, as I said, had a collaboration with Walking While Black, Love is the Answer. And when I saw the film, uh, I saw it the first time and the film had a real effect on me. It is a documentary about community and police relationships. And uh, they continued showing the film and, uh, I continued working with them and helping to arrange for showings of the film here in the city. I do not re, and it's all volunteer. I receive no pay, no compensation in any which way for working with them. But I have been, uh, working with them. I'm just trying to answer your question.
I, I wanna know if you, are you a member of the Council of Elders? Are you a member?
I'm a member of the Council of Elders, yeah.
Okay, on, on the application, it says that you're the applicant and the event organizer. Are you the event organizer?
I'm applying, yes. I, I took the lead, I as a, as an elder.
So you're a member and you're one of the lead organizers of this event?
Of this event. At the, the Council of Elders, yes, is helping to sponsor, is behind this whole event. Because they, the Council of Elders is in collaboration, working collaboratively with Walking While Black, Love is the Answer. It's becoming a movement across the, the country, uh, there, of the, the, uh, Ypsilanti was the first municipality to sign a MOU. A, um, lifetime license agreement that we can show the film at any time. Uh, earlier this year, uh, Washington County Sheriff's Department also bought a lifetime licensing agreement so that it can be shown anywhere in the county at any time.
Question?
Uh, yes. Councilmember Morgan, is it okay if I, I do, is your last question or can I move on? Can I get someone else?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to know if it was a nonprofit or not, if she'd known that.
It is a nonprofit, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it's not, it's not for profit at all. No.
Thank you so much.
And when we did the presentation, we're asking for the city to be the fiduciary, which they, the city would have been paid for their services. Uh, and the book, there was a question about the books. The books would have been, uh, given free to any, to those that would have been a part of the mentoring circles that, um, would be formed with that, so.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, chance, I saw your hand up.
Oh, um, I, I don't have a question anymore.
Uh, anyone else, council? Okay. Uh, so yeah, my question, I think you were, um, just getting into answering it around, um, the nonprofit status and the funding. Um, and where, so where does the funding come from if there, if there's no charge to the city? Um, we had asked some questions before that I think are still murky around the, the cost, the books, and the different things like that. And I think we never got those answers. And so I think that's why maybe for me, um, some of the questions that Councilmember Morgan is, is asking resonate with me as well around just having some clear information around the nonprofit status of, of this organization. Um, do we have any info on that?
I can assure you that it is a nonprofit organization. And that there have been, I do know that there have been three counties, uh, in, um, Pennsylvania and every uh, police force and every city in those counties has, um, adopted, have signed on to working with Love is the Answer. Uh, the same up around, uh, Ro- Rochester, Rochester, New York. Uh, there are places in California, uh, there have been, uh, I knew, know that there are two cities in Zimbabwe. This is a nonprofit. It is, there's nothing for profit about it. Uh, they, uh, the, the books and the, the cost in that, uh, that was a, oh gosh, what do you call it? It was a, uh, up, uh, they were fulfilling, writing a grant propus- uh, proposal that was available through off, uh, Congresswoman Dingell's office. And, um, that money that would have been, it would have purchased books, but it would have also provided jobs and paid for the, the training of, um, mentors to run mentors, uh, to conduct mentor circles here in the city of Ypsilanti, working towards bringing the city together. Uh, and that is something that the Council of Elders, uh, which has enough, it's, it's not connected with the city or anything. It is totally volunteer. That is something that we're working, trying to do, is to, um, bring communities together and to help the, uh, help, help the schools. We, the MOU that was signed with, uh, Dr. Edmondson was renewed with, um, the present superintendent, Dr. Alina Zachary Ross, and we do have, uh, someone from the representative from the school board, uh, school board or school district that, uh, is a part of the Council of Elders. And it's all aimed at helping our students to move forward and to, uh, to work. And the, the collaboration between these two, the Walking While Black and, or Love is the Answer and the, um, National Association of African Americans in hu- human resources. That is the group that the, that is most closely connected to the Council of Elders. Uh, and it is totally nonprofit. The Council of Elders, uh, we have worked and, uh, believe it was last year, not twenty twenty, but twenty nineteen, we did offer, um, two scholarships to, uh, YCS students. And, uh, now that school is back in session, we will be doing the same for, in the year twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we, um, we work on a, we just work on donations. That's how we, that's how we operate. Um, I don't know if there are other questions I'd be more than happy to answer. And if any of, uh, council would like to become a part of the Council of Elders, you are more than welcome to join us. We are looking for for members. Some of the members, uh, a couple of the pastors that were, um, a couple of the pastors that were, um, members, one passed away last year and the other because of, uh, responsibilities that the church had to step back. He's still very much involved, but he's not able to be fully, um, active with the group.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wilcoxon, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I'll lower my hand. Um, I just wanted to disclose the, uh, association here. Um, Gail Walcoff is my wife. Um, she is not a member of the Council of Elders. She is not, uh, uh, a board member or any member of the, uh, Love is the Answer nonprofit. Um, her nonprofit Educate Youth does, uh, act as a fiduciary for that grant that was submitted, uh, with the help of, uh, Debbie Dingle, Congresswoman Dingle. Um, and in that, uh, you know, I raised the question earlier whether this was, uh, for Mr. Barr, whether this was a conflict of interest for me. Um, since Gail has spoken to this, I, I believe that it probably is. Um, but since their, their finances are not, uh, since she's not a part of those organizations and the finances are not directly connected, that's not the issue. But the issue is she is supporting this and, and therefore I should be abstaining from the vote on this issue.
And it, were you asking for a clarification?
I, I was asking earlier, but.
Okay. Mr. Barr, Mr. Callbar, could you provide us with some clarification here?
Certainly, typically, uh, anyone, any family member, uh, immediate family member, i- their interest in a matter is attributed to the, the public official or the council member. So yes, I would agree that would be more appropriate for abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barr. Um, I had a follow-up question about the, um, when I read the resolution, I reread it, uh, a few minutes ago. It's asking for cosponsorship. So I just want to clarify, is the cosponsorship waiving of fees? Or is it asking for that amount to be contributed from the city to this event?
It is the waiving of fees.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say that, um, everyone that I have or we have approached, uh, regarding this event, we have, um, received, uh, wave, um, wave applause, um, and wave, uh, support from, um, the, from Ypsilanti Community Schools. They are very much a part of this, uh, event. The, um, E M U, the athletic department, um, they came to me, uh, back when, back in July, wanting to, um, be more active in the city. And when I talked about this event with them, they, uh, were very excited about it and saw it as an opportunity to become more involved and, uh, work with the city, work with our, our, uh, residents. The, um, I was, spoke with, um, oh gosh, Vice President, um, Vicky Ream, and we have talked about it, and Eastern will be, uh, giving us a donation. They are very supportive. Um, we will be receiving a, uh, a contributions of sponsorship from University Bank, which has, uh, newly relocated, um, has a new location here in the city. Uh, also from, um, I received word today that the University of Michigan, uh, Credit Union, uh, which would be the E M U Credit Union, there, they will be known, is also supporting. Uh, any number of people have, uh, reached out to me, and they, they like the idea of bringing the police and the community together. The, some of the speakers that we will have will be some of the elected officials, uh, Congresswoman Dingle, um, and, uh, some of the others in the area have agreed to, uh, to be there to, to speak. And, um, there will be a coming together and a, an act of reconciliation uh, between the, the Ypsilanti Police Department. Chief Degusti spoke with him today. He will not be here. He will be out of town, but he said he would have someone from the department there to interact with some of the youth in our, um, our community to, uh, make a declaration of reconciliation. And it is really needed. Not too long ago, I, in one of our meetings, uh, had a report from, from an officer, how he had stopped and, uh, was stopping a nineteen-year-old, and the nineteen-year-old stopped, but then he took off, so a, a chase ensued. And when he's, when they finally, when the guy, really young man finally stopped, and he was asked, why did you run? And his comment was that he was scared of the police. And the stop was because he was following a car too close. But, so there are some things that are, that are happening here within our own city that we need some reconciliation between our police department and our communities. We need to work closer together. We, and also we need a closer coming together of, uh, of just our community. I remember when we had, when we first had the COPAC, and before that, the, uh, the C O P C grant. That was one of the things that was the major things of that, uh, grant was that there, it would be a bringing together of our communities. There was a neighborhood association formed in every single area in the city. And, uh, once or twice a year, all of the neighborhoods would come together. And it gave people an opportunity to, uh, respond to each other and to get to know one another. I believe that this event will also offer the same opportunity. I've had any number of people, people that just heard about it, that have reached out to me and have said, thanks for, uh, thanks for proposing this. We're looking forward to it. And I just hope that the city, uh, that the council will see, would want to be a part of it also and, uh, would waive the fees.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance, I saw your hand pop up.
Okay, so just real quick for some clarification. Uh, one, we're looking for a waiver of fees and not actual cash, that's right?
That's right.
Right. Okay, and two, um, the Ypsilanti Council of Elders is putting on the event, and the event is called Love is the Answer, et cetera, correct?
Yes.
And that organization operates not-for-profit, right?
Not-for-profit.
Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Jones Chance, for those questions. Any additional questions from council? Go on, one. All right, seeing none. Clark Colingo, can you please call the roll?
Uh, prior to doing that, council, if you are abstaining, please indicate as such, I'm going to call your name. Mayor Protem Brown?
Yes.
House Member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
I'm not allowed to vote.
Will you just abstain?
Abstain.
Councilmember Morgan?
Come right back to me, please, and thank.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Abstain.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with four yes, one absence, and two extensions.
I'd just like to say thank you, council, and, uh, all of you are invited. Please, uh, please come down and interact with, um, with the community that's there. And it's all about spreading the love. And once we, and I really truly honestly believe that love is the answer for the dilemma that our nation is in today. Thank you.
Council, prior to moving on, um, there are some individuals on the, on the meeting for the Enough Initiative. From my understanding is I, uh, you were to give a presentation during, not this one that we just voted on, but the Domestic Violence Law, prior to that, was, was that incorrect? There's, we don't have any other presentations planned or on this agenda. Are you not affiliated with that resolution?
No. We, um, we're separately affiliated. However, we do work collaboratively with, um, women and men working for change. Um, Lisa, who was on earlier, did not mention some of the things that we are asking, um, to be able to do, however. So I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity to present our requests also.
So that, that would be up to city council, if you'd like to allow them time to make comments. You'd have to amend the agenda to allow them to do so.
Okay, with clarification, are you saying, this is, this was supposed to be in conjunction with the resolution prior to the one we just voted on?
I, I believe there was a misunderstanding from what I understood when this was placed on the agenda is that they, their group was affiliated with the resolution for the Domestic Violence, uh, Walk Event.
Oh, okay.
Is there another resolution?
There is not another resolution, which is, I think we're the misunderstanding.
Agreed. And we had a meeting earlier this week with men and women working, or women and men working for change. And I thought we had a much better understanding than, than what occurred. So I'm very hopeful that we're still allowed to talk about what we would like to have happen in the month of October as well, in collaboration with them, and things that were not brought up, that we've talked about collaborating with them, with other people in their organization.
I moved to amend the agenda to, uh, to give them an opportunity to do this presentation.
Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second.
All right, so we'll, is there any discussion?
We can't vote on any of this, can we?
We can vote.
This is just via presentation.
Yeah, for the presentation. Okay, um, Clark Colingo, you can call the roll.
You just do a voice vote for this.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right, I feel like I heard all of the ahs. So, please, please share with us. Thank you for being here, and I'm so sorry for the misunderstanding. So thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you, and we're very happy to be here. My name is Nicole Beverly, and I'm the president and founder of the Enough Initiative. I am a survivor of domestic violence and also an advocate. Our organization is a nonprofit organization. And we were actually the recipients of the funding raised by, um, the Women and Men Working for Change 5K last year for the work that we do in the community. Um, we also participated in their event, um, the Christmas, um, meal event. We volunteered there. Um, my understanding was that we were working together to, um, present the next item of turning the city purple for October, um, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, I, we have, I'm very, um, we're, we're going to be involved with the 5K, but I'm also going to be speaking at the Washtenaw County Democratic Party D V panel on that same date to address the, uh, issues related to domestic violence and lack of resources in our county for domestic violence victims, um, and children. Also, um, we are going to be having a, uh, Purple Out game as well as for doing a full curriculum at Lincoln High School on October fifteenth that I wanted to make everyone aware of, to raise awareness for domestic violence in the community. And our plan is to alternate between Lincoln High School and Ypsilanti Community High School each year in terms of presentations and Purple Out, um, events. We, in terms of, you know, I have never presented at city council before. I was not aware we could request funds. Um, what, all we want to do essentially is make awareness known in our city. We want signs posted along Michigan Avenue. I prefer the center median. We'd like to have purple lights handed out to all of the local businesses along Michigan Avenue. Um, and my ultimate goal is also to somehow spotlight or add lighting to the water tower to turn it purple with signs to raise awareness and Ypsilanti's commitment to making a change for domestic violence and inhering the earlier resolutions, um, that were proclaimed. Instead of making October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we would request that Ypsilanti make October Ypsil- make it Domestic Violence Action Month rather than Awareness Month. Because awareness isn't cutting it at this point. Domestic violence rates are rising. Domestic violence-related homicide rates are rising. It's time for action, not just awareness. So we would like, my whole thing in coming here was, I just want to have permission to do these things, also to wrap the light posts in purple as we do at Lincoln High School without us getting in trouble in any way, shape, or form. Um, and also getting assistance from the city and, and getting those permissions to reach out to, um, the local businesses, to have maybe signs posted in their windows that they support victims of domestic violence, and they're a safe place for victims to go, should they need help. So we are all about, um, action. We have also, for any of you who are aware of the issues going on at Safe House and the victims that have been evicted, we are the ones who have been actively making sure they have housing and food and the resources that they need. It is our organization that has been making that happen over the past two weeks.
Thank you.
Anything to do moving forward? If I need to, need to do any special paperwork or documentation, please let me know. I will be more than happy to do that, because our organization is all about creating change in addition to awareness.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Okay, so.
Council, i- if I may, real quick, so this would be similar to Turn the Town Trial that, uh, council approves every year for September. Um, I think it's important to note that the city of Ypsilanti has no authority over where, uh, Lincoln High School is. You'd have to stick with the.
Oh, we're, we're good there.
So then, this would have to be on the next agenda for approval for a Turn the Town Purple. So if this is supported by council to be on the next agenda, you just would email me all the information that I need to create a resolution. And then that would be in the, probably put in the consent agenda as it does with the.
And, uh, when would that next meeting be happening? Because we were hoping to do it the same date as the 5K?
The, that, that's not going to be.
Yeah, no. Okay.
Possible, um, it's a 5K, is, when is the 5K?
October second.
Oh, then I apologize. Yeah, our next meeting is next week. So just get it to me as soon as possible. And I will get it scheduled for next week.
And so can you?
Sorry.
And that is council's support, adding it to the next agenda, correct?
Yeah, wouldn't someone from council have to put that on the agenda, though?
I would, I would, I would agree with that. If I may, my hands.
That's how your hand is raised. I was, I was about to get to you. Do you, are you ready to take the gavel back?
Um, well, I'll go on and say this, and then I'll take it back. Uh, yes, I, the, um, the, uh, leader of, um, or the founder of, uh, Men and Women Working for Change had, uh, spoke with me when she first, uh, made, filled out all the applications and was working with Wendy, uh, in the event on this. And that was part of the request that was included. It didn't show up in the, this resolution, but that was included in the discussion, uh, with Wendy, when, uh, for that. And I do believe that it was just, um, uh, that there was no oversight intended. I think it just, you know, just happened possibly because, uh, I'm not really that acquainted with Lisa, but I could hear her, that fact that she was kind of nervous in presenting, because she's never been before council either. So, uh, but that was, that was definitely, um, talked about when they made the, um, when they filed for, uh, the e- event, their event papers, so, yes.
Um, Councilmember Somerville, I see your hand, and then I will pass the gavel back to Mayor Richardson.
Yeah, um, you know, the people from Women and Men Working for Change aren't really here, and I'm, I'm not trying to speak for them. I just noticed something that I just want to call attention to, um. I just feel like, and maybe it wasn't intended this way. It seems like there was a critique about what they were doing, and they're active, you know, members from the community that have done this for a few years. Um, I just wanted, I don't know, it just felt weird that there was some, like, critique about what they were doing in raising awareness. Um, and to my knowledge, I don't know that any of you live here, but the people that are organizing that live on the South Side and have grown up there. So it's just, it kind of took, I, it didn't, I didn't take that very well. Um, I just think that we should be cogn- cognizant when you're organizing in a community, the, this is. I just think that we should be cognizant when you're organizing in a community, this is organized by a group of black residents, and you're white, and I just felt like it was a critique on them, and I just didn't appreciate it.
I apologize for the misunderstanding. We've worked collaboratively with them. I was the speaker at their event at the 5K last October. We volunteered at their events. We worked collaboratively, collaboratively with them. And I think it was just an oversight that things weren't relayed, like we're working together on this project. The signs are going to have both of our names on them that we want posted throughout the city, so I apologize if there's a misunderstanding. I may be white, but my children are biracial.
Yeah, it was the way that you said it. You were critiquing the words that they were using. And it just didn't, you know, it didn't impress me, and I know that it upset other people in the community too, so I wanted to draw attention to that, and I, I think your intentions are great, but it's, it's not cool to come into community and critique the people who are actually part of it, and that's what I felt happened, so I just wanted to raise awareness. They're not here to stick up for themselves. I'm happy that you're organizing it, but there are two separate processes. We don't just sponsor events. If you want to paint the town purple, that's a separate thing, and this just meant getting a waiver for a park is totally different, and I respect that there's two different things happening here. Not sure where the miscommunication was, but I just felt like the way that that was being critiqued was inappropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Somerville. Councilmember Wilcox, and I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So, just for clarification here, there's, there's things in addition to what Lisa was speaking to that Nicole wants to have happen. So Nicole is going to submit that list of things to Clerk Colanga. Then that would need a sponsor from council. I'm willing to look at that and entertain that. Is it the case that all of these things are already in the listing for the special events? Or do we have that document?
I don't know if we have that document, but I do know that 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 was definitely talked with, brought up with Wendy. I talked with Wendy about when they, I was kind of put in the middle when they were working on the the permit and the park and the, all of those fees, and that painting the town purple was a definite question put forward to Wendy, so I don't know if it's actually in the in the, written in the item or what, but I know that that was a part of it, and I do honestly just believe that it, it was just an oversight in the presentation tonight. That's what I believe, so.
Okay.
Because I do, I do know that they have worked that Nicole and the the men and women have, women and men have worked together, so.
So it sounds like we need to get the list from Nicole. We need to get whatever paperwork that was submitted for the special event and, and proceed with, with. Augmenting that. Thanks, Andrew, Anthony. And proceed as, for augmenting that information.
Nicole, go ahead.
I just want to clarify because I feel rather attacked right now in terms of what was just stated about our representation, and that was not our intent whatsoever. As I've stated, we've worked collaboratively with this organization. All of the victims that we've been assisting have been African American that have been evicted from Safe House. There is no racial tone or context to what we are trying to do. We are trying to work together as a community. There was an oversight in what was happening in terms of the presentation, obviously. This evening, it was no insult to Women and Men Working for Change. They know me very, very well. We work collaboratively on a regular basis, so I just feel the need to, to clarify that. And our organization prides itself on inclusiveness and, and making sure everyone is represented for, as victims of domestic violence because we know it does not discriminate against anyone. In fact, the black community, community has hit the hardest and has the highest ratio of domestic violence incidents. And we are all about making sure that that is recognized and those voices are heard.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan, I see your hand was up. Are you?
Yeah, it was. I just wanted to ask some, this question is to one of the organizers, Nicole. Have you guys ever painted the town purple before?
We've not, no, this will be, actually, we would be the first city to paint the town purple. We are the, Lincoln High School is the first high school, and we've done it three times now to have a Purple Out football game. We are the only high school in Michigan that has done that so far, and we would be the first city, as far as I know, in Michigan to paint the town purple and raise this awareness and, and call to action for domestic violence.
Has anyone else been asked? Have you proposed this to anyone else? I know you said we may be the first ones to do it. Have anyone else been, has it been proposed to anyone else in this fashion?
We have never proposed it. I don't know about other organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I think, Councilmember Wilcox, and you've laid out the next steps. We're going to receive some information, and then if there's support from council, that will be sent to Clerk Colanga, and then it will be added to the next agenda. Is that the process, Clerk Colanga? Oh, you're muted, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, he's saying yes. Okay. Well, Nicole, thank you so much for sharing your information, and we look forward to seeing more about what you discussed tonight, and then therefore we will then let our clerk know, right? Oh, he's unmuted now. Hi, Clerk Colanga.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
My computer is, appears to be possessed. I don't know what's happening.
So is mine, so join the club.
Okay, yes, those are the next steps. I'll, I'll, I'll stay in touch with our organization and just make sure that what they're requesting is permitted by ordinances, and then it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, but, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilcox, and I almost called you Clerk Wilcox.
Just another clarifying question. The whole idea of changing the color on the, on the water tower? I mean, that has to go through Yucca, right?
Right.
Right.
Does that require us to do a different process?
Yeah, you'd have to get the approval of the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority.
Did you say it one more time? I'm sorry.
You'd have to get the approval of the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority. They own the water tower.
Okay, so this is a matter of us reaching out to them?
Right.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Richardson?
Thank you very much for.
Drive, all right.
Taking the gavel. I will take it back.
Yeah.
And thanks for that little tidbit, Andrew. I didn't realize that Yucca owned the water tower. Always thought that the city did because it's been there long before Yucca came on board. Was before Yucca was birthed, so. Okay, that's good to know. Oh, thank you. And thank you, the Enough Initiative. Appreciate, appreciate you coming.
Thank you so much for having us.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Halanga, if we could move on, please.
Council moving on to Resolution Number 2021-194, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the parking permit fee schedule has been amended since adoption, and whereas complexity of the document has led to formatting errors and potentially misleading alignment and duplication issues, and whereas it is in the best interest of the community to present a clear and accurate fee and schedule document. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council adopt the attached fees, the parking permits labeled corrected and simplified fee schedule. In lieu of the fees and structured label formatted fee schedule as of nine eight twenty twenty one.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, discussion? Is anyone here for presentation?
Bonnie is in there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Westler?
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor.
Good evening.
Pretty straightforward, just what it says in the update. We noticed that with all of the changes that we made to the fee schedule, particularly with regards to parking, there were a couple of things that should have been stricken through that weren't stricken through, and so there were a couple of fees that had two different prices listed. This should just clarify and simplify everything, hopefully, and make sure that we're all on the same page, literally and figuratively. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions?
Yeah, but enough numbers in red, Wes is no longer there, or those are the additions?
So there were numbers in red on the original fee schedule. So you'll see there are two pages. There's the corrected and simplified fee schedule, and then there's the formatted fee schedule as of nine twenty eight. And so the things that were highlighted in red in that fee schedule were things that had changed, so either the wording of what it was being called was changed, or the price was changed, or that it was a new listing. For instance, you see first visitor passes highlighted in red. That's because we never called out that the first visitor pass specifically was for and now that's specifically called out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Halanga, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Somerville? Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next resolution, Resolution Number 2021-195, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the June twenty fifth, twenty sixth storms caused several basements in the city to flood, and whereas city staff responded to the emergency by waiving trash collection limits for a two-week period from June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one to July ninth, twenty twenty one, and whereas the city has incurred approximately seventeen thousand in additional expenses due to this, and whereas the emergency expenditure was necessary to ensure the safe removal of flood damaged solid waste from impacted areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approved a budget amendment for, from, for account two two six dash six dash five two one zero dash eight one eight dash zero zero to increase the total expenditure line item for five hundred and five thousand to five hundred and twenty two thousand to accommodate this additional solid waste collection fees.
So moved. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, discussions?
Of information from Mr. Akers.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Real quick, June twenty fifth, June twenty sixth, the flooding event, the city did receive approximately seven inches of rainfall, caused many homes in the city to basement flooding. In response to this, city staff and our solid waste contractor Stevens, were able to work together to waive our trash collection limits for a two-week period for the weeks of June twenty eighth and July fifth in order to help residents quickly remove flood damage items from their property. Our trash collector collected an additional one hundred and thirty four and a half tons of solid waste above what our weekly averages are, and due to that, there were some additional disposal fees that we incurred. The additional disposal fees that we incurred for those collections totaled sixteen thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars twenty five cents. The emergency expenditure forced us to exceed our budget amount for trash expenditures, and due to this, we're requesting a seventeen thousand dollar increase in the budget line item to accommodate the emergency response. In addition to this, we did reach out to county emergency management about potentially having this covered under state and federal disaster relief funds. As of, I talked to them last week, they had indicated that the state and federal government had not made those relief funds available to municipalities to offset some of their costs. I know the county had some road funding and some repair and maintenance items that they incurred as a result of the flood as well. So the county did apply to the feds in order to accommodate that expenditure. The feds have not responded yet, but if they do, there's a likelihood we may get this covered, but we'll, we'll have to wait and see. So that concludes my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you're saying, I'll get with you, Mr. Wilcox, and you're saying that we have to wait and find out what the feds do with the county before we can apply, or have we applied?
So the county has applied on our behalf. So they, they've taken a large pool of money, or they've taken, they've taken inventory of what all the damages were. They had made application, and they're currently waiting to hear back. But e- even still, even if we do hear back and we do get reimbursement, we will still need to amend our budget to, for the incurred expenditure.
If we get money back, if they, if they get money and we get money, why would we still need to amend the budget for this amount?
Just, just because the, the budget, it's incurred as an expenditure in the budget. If we do receive money from the federal government for this, it'll be listed as revenue, so the expenditure will still be there. The line item will still need to be adjusted. We'll just, we'll just have revenue to add to it to offset it.
Okay, but the revenue would go, would replace what we spend out?
Yes, the, the offset.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Hi, Ron. Who is it, nine eight three Madison? In the expenditures, I get the seventeen thousand. It makes sense. It is a great move to help the people affected by the flood, but that expenditure is, it's only a hundred dollars, and it's almost two months after the flooding actually occurred.
There was a issue with that property after they had a flood. They had some structural damage to the home, from what I understand, and they were unable to get into the house to remove the flood damage items, so they had contacted us once they were able and got clear to get into the house to remove the items. We went out there and checked to make sure that they were actually flood damage items, and it was pretty clear that everything there had some water damage. So we, we picked that up as a separate collection.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Halanga?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Thank you. And thanks, Mr. Akers.
Council moving on to Resolution Number 2021-187, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas funding has been programmed in the Washtenaw County Community Development Block Program for the retrofitting of existing sidewalk ramps in the city of Ypsilanti, and whereas the city of Ypsilanti has solicited steel bids for the project, and whereas GM and Sons Construction is the lowest qualified bidder and is being recommended by the city's engineering consultant for this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ypsilanti awards the twenty twenty one CDBG ramps contract we ordered to GM and Sons Construction for the bid amount of ninety five thousand five hundred dollars that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign this contract, subject to review of the city attorney, and any change orders are subject to review and approval by the city manager to facilitate the completion of this work.
Is there movement, a motion and support?
I'll move.
Support. Councilmember Somerville, you removed this. Do you want to support the motion?
I requested the removal.
Oh, I'm sorry, you requested this one. Okay.
I supported it.
All right. In question, discussion?
So in removing this, it's not clear to me how, how can, how we can pass this for almost twice the budget that we're actually going to pay them out and then have that changed later on. And that's why I had it taken off, because this doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, how can we approve a ninety five thousand dollar amount for a contract when we're going to change that and break it down to fifty thousand dollars?
This aligns actually with past practice and what we've done with previous years when the bids have come in over. We did calculate the amount that we anticipate the contract to eventually end up as, which is under sixty thousand dollars. I believe it is fifty one thousand dollars and change. Of course, because of the quick turnaround that CDBG spending and that timeline requires, we don't have confirmation of that. And of course, things change during construction and things always end up being a little over or under. So it is a, definitely a large amount to be off, but it is not unusual to be off in some amount.
So then the revision of the contract would mean that certain projects don't get completed during this cycle? Or how does that work?
So the way the CDBG ramps work is we work with the county Office of Community and Economic Development in order to get a certain list of ramps cleared through their environmental review process in advance. So these ramps that we had bid out are already cleared through this process. And so they will likely just be pushed to the following year's contract. What actually happens next contract year depends a little bit also on where the concrete prices go. Because as you can tell, concrete prices have been a bit volatile this year.
Can you say we've done this before? I don't recall approving.
Last year, the bids came in at around eighty thousand dollars, and we did not do eighty thousand dollars worth of ramps, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Would you call the row, please, Mr. Halinga?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence. Council, moving on. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash one eight nine, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. The ordinance entitled an ordinance to remove, excuse me, remove hypodermic syringes and needles from being classified or defined as drug paraphernalia is approved on second and final read.
I'll move.
I'll support.
It's been moved, supported, discussion?
Yeah, I have actually an amendment to make. Hold on one second, I just want to make sure I don't mess anything up because I thought we had it all under control last time. One second. Sorry, I'm just trying to pull up both the language from last time and what I need to change it to. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to see if this makes sense to others who supported this last time. Though, we just need to reference the full MCL instead of just a certain section. So the full MCL would be adopting the drug paraphernalia defined in Michigan's Public Health Code. I thought we covered this, we talked through it a lot at the last meeting, but what was sent after that to be sure was not correct. So the full MCL would be MCL three 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 point seven four five one. And it would just be everything under that section. There's a ton of definitions, and then there's some subsections on there too. Unfortunately, only subsection F was pretty much adopted the last time. But we really were trying to adopt the full language that was passed by the state that's in Michigan law. Does anybody have any?
Any other comments?
Sorry. I'll go ahead, just, I'll just make the motion then.
Any, council, Mr. Jones Chance?
I'll wait for the motion to amend, I guess.
Okay. Andrew, I have a question. In our packet, the highlighted, and maybe this is for Mr. Barr, the highlighted language. I'm obviously not making a motion on that, so I think I just need to like totally rephrase the language in the resolution. Just trying to find the best way to like make it clear.
The ordinance is what you want to?
Okay. It's just, it's confusing because the actual like resolution.
Yeah, the, it would go by.
What the last one, okay, I think I understand. Sorry for taking up so much time on this, guys. I just want to make sure that's right when we.
Yeah, so the, the, the last motion was just for that section F.
We would want it to be the full, like that full section of state law. So it would be MCL three 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 point seven four five one through through seven four five five. Well. I feel like, one second, let me, I'm bouncing back between the state. Yeah, I mean, we would.
And and this would be a question for the attorney. Is this amendment substantial enough that it would require another public hearing?
Prior to that, I'm unclear a bit, or I just want to make sure that I am clear before moving forward on what exactly our intention is by including the entirety of the state statute. Is that all of what we want to bake into ours? Or do we just, or do we want to bake in all of the exceptions?
Yeah, we actually, yeah, we, we did want to adopt the full language that's in the state law. And we actually have Mary Miller from MDHS is here and Ashley from Unified is here. If we could promote them.
Joe, I am unable to do that, so if you could, that would be okay.
Sorry, who did I need to unmute?
Mary Miller and Ashley from Unified.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Ashley. I don't know if Mary has a listen from her cellphone.
I am, yep, I'm here.
Great, so, um, I'm sorry to talk this out in the middle of the, the meeting, but at our last meeting, we talked about adopting the full language under the Michigan law. And then Nicole and I were made aware that only section F was adopted. And I think both of us were under the impression that we adopted the full language, as I'm sure you were as well. So I'm just looking at it right now. Sections three 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 point seven four five seven, there are sections A through F. And then there's the section above that in the document that we've been working off of back and forth over the last few months. That's just all the definitions. So I think it's pretty, I think it's clear that we would have had, we need to include A through F.
So I'm gonna jump in. A lot of, a lot of cities that we work with or townships, townships that we work with, they will just adopt that exemption language, which, which is that, that bottom part?
A through F or just F?
Just F usually. If you want to take all of the exemptions, you can. But as, you know, but we've found that most cities just do that last exemption. And that has been accepted.
Okay, that, so that's, because that's, that's how it currently stands. I guess my fear is that the way that it's like reading in our ordinance doesn't, I think, totally reflect that. And maybe this needs to be brought back. It only, it only, from my understanding, applies to syringes in the highlighted section in our ordinance, based on what we adopted at the last meeting. That's what's confusing to me. So I feel like for clarity from council, it seems like we would need to, but.
So it, it does have, it does have the term drug paraphernalia means any equipment except hyper, hypodermic syringes and needles, or any objects sold, offered for sale. So that's, and maybe the attorney can, but that's not speaking to hypodermic syringes. If it's talking about any additional objects that are sold or given away by state. So that should also include the other sterile or clean supplies.
Okay, I see that. I know you have your hand up, Steve. I see that Ashley from Unified has her hand up too, so I don't know what makes more sense. Hope's the mayor's.
Okay.
Clarification from.
Yeah, I know we went around with this the last time, and then there was some confusion after the meeting, which is why I pulled it tonight off the consent.
Okay, Ashley, did you have some clarification?
Or? So I think it's really, for me, it's more on a practical sense. I do not have a legal background besides dealing with the criminal legal system. So I think the concerns are, is how is this going to be in practice? And if we're confused, you know, by looking at this, right? How is law enforcement going to interpret this? And is there a full understanding that, yes, you know, our organization and other places will provide these public health tools to prevent infection and to really foster health amongst, you know, various residents in the community? But how is this going to be applied? So are they going to say, well, these syringes are okay, but this crack pipe is not, right? And they both transmit disease, they both, you know, have health risk. And how will this interpretation of the law be placed? And then, you know, how are individuals going, like law enforcement going to prove that they're a part of this program when we know many of our houseless community, they lose possession of their stuff or it's stolen, so they may not have a card. So however this language is, I just want to make sure that it's adequately disseminated, right? And also, if we really want to be equitable in this, then it would be just decriminalizing paraphernalia, no matter whether it's a health organization giving products or not. But I just wanted to add that piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
You know, I'm appreciating this discussion, but as we go into the discussion, it sounds very much like we need to go back and have this posted and have a discussion where it has been set forth for the, the public. I think some of the things that it sounds like we're getting into take us into another, another realm. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Halinga, help me with that. That's what I, it's just what I'm hearing.
If it's council's will to completely remove the paraphernalia ordinance, yeah, that would, that would require another first and second reading with a public hearing. So it might be best just to pass this as is, and then this will take effect in thirty days. Because we won't be able to, council won't be able to have a public hearing with proper notice until October. So it might be best just to move forward with this ordinance as is. And then if council wants to remove the paraphernalia ordinance altogether, have another ordinance amendment.
Sure, and just to be clear, the reason why I pulled this off is so we could have this discussion to make sure, because it's unclear in the language. It, it was just a little unclear. And based on what we got after the meeting, it was still unclear to me because it was meant to be for more than just syringes if they came from a local agency. But it sounds like as long as, as long as our officers would be interpreting any objects sold or offered or given away by a local agency or nonprofit, then I guess that should be covered. But I also think the conversation around decriminalizing altogether is a worthy conversation to have because we prosecute people for these things at the local level for, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't actually reduce harm. So I will gladly bring that back if there's other council people to support that. But the intentions would try, for me to bring this off the consent was just to clarify and make sure this is actually covering all paraphernalia provided by agencies. It sounds like it is. But I think the bigger issue is how are we as a city interacting with folks who are in this population of people? And are we actually reducing harm by prosecuting them, whether they're in a program or not? And that's obviously a discussion, I think, worthy of having. But there's no evidence that prosecuting people actually helps them, so.
Any other comments? Will Coxon? Was your hand up?
Yeah, I, I found this, this confusing last time, and it has become even more confusing at this point because the, the language here and the use of the English language is an ambiguous thing. So when you set things off in parentheses saying, except hypodermic syringes and needles, and then, or any subjects sold, you know, is that along with equipment, or is that?
Equipment by a government or nonprofit agency.
Like I said, so if, if you're accepting hypodermic syringes and needles, then there's this highlighted point. Are those also being accepted? Or is that the definition goes with the definition of the equipment? This, the, the English language is ambiguous here.
Well, based on the conversation at our last meeting, it, I, we, we kind of covered this. The only reason why I brought it back out to highlight it is this, I want to make sure that it actually does what we thought it was supposed to do. So if there's confusion now, I apologize. I still would like to vote on this tonight because the sooner we do that, the sooner we're actually helping people who have been negatively impacted by how our ordinance currently reads in the city.
Okay, Mr. Morgan and then Mr. Jones Chance?
I just have a comment. I think it's a thin line between supporting people and enabling them. And I know governments are not giving away crack pipes, even if they're giving away hypodermic needles. I think it's a thin line between wanting to help people and then just allowing anything because what we think is supposed to be enforced. And when the state has a, a, a list of what it does, it doesn't do. And us as the local government, we can't duplicate those efforts. And regardless of how, even if we want to support it, we couldn't, we couldn't duplicate it or enforce it the way the state would or would not. So it, it's still up to us to create something that's enforceable and that's, that can be read and applied fairly. Because again, it's still up to the. Um, because again, it's still up to the decisions and interpretation of officers independently. So again, I, 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 I'm not for letting everybody, everything slide. It's just, so, some things are penalties. You just have a penalty and I'm, I'm very empathetic to people with lifelong or habits or, or I am, um. But still, um. It's just, everything can't be, everything ain't permissible. We just can't permit every single thing and I can. Um, I'm, I'm definitely empathetic to people who have drug issues and so um. Just wanna say that and as a city, we have to be mindful of what we're allowing, even in what we're trying to help. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, so just for clarification, the concern here is that we are. Missing some items and the things that we wanted to have excluded. Because when I um, read this, so you know, the exceptions include. The hypodermic syringes and needles and everything in yellow. The um, inclusions begin with. The line, right, just after it says but including. So. I guess I'm a little confused where, where. I'm confused about where the confusion is, I guess.
So the reason why I brought this out of the consent agenda was to verify that the, the addition to our paraphernalia ordinance also included. Other devices outside of syringes that have been provided by agencies that are clean for folks that are using those. Whether they're, they're gonna use them, whether or not they're clean, and the purpose here is to stop the spread of infectious um, disease, infectious disease. And Ashley could probably explain this better because she does this work every day and has, and I'm sure um. I don't know the background other than I'm D H S for um, Mary on the call, but I will say that. When people are trying to move away from one. Ad- addictive substance, they might use other substances that may be less harmful. And they could pretend, like if we just said syringes, there are other tools that people could be using. Such as a pipe or a bowl if they're smoking cannabis and they could technically. Um, or it could be another substance and they could still be harassed for that.
I tend to agree with um, somewhat with Mr. Morgan in that. We don't want to be enabling either. You know, and I know um, and I don't know, um, are there? I know when I was um. Working as, as, and a substance abuse counselor, I didn't know or of any agency that was. Passing out pipes or um, et cetera to, or other. Paraphernalia other than, than syringes to uh, to people. So I'm a little bit. Lost too on what the other, what any other, any object sold or offer would be.
I believe Ashley from Unified has her hand up.
Okay, Ashley.
Did City Council receive my packet of um, evidence-based material of thirty pages of references regarding? Different harm reduction techniques, syringes and infectious disease. I'm sure you all did not read it. I get it. It's boring. Each piece, each piece that we distribute has a reason. Um, and Washtenaw County, um, hepatitis C, um, for the county and the state, we're the eighth leading. Hepatitis C is spread through shared cottons, crack pipes. And other types of equipment, not just syringes. And so the biggest emphasis, you know, in this is you have to think of the whole puzzle and what pieces go with this. Um, many think it's enabling and that's, you know, a really abscinate focus um, with limited evidence. And with the overdose crisis that we're in. Um, I think we really have to challenge the societal beliefs, right, of. What is enabling is enabling caring, providing supplies so that people can be as healthy as possible. Um, or is it saying, well, you know, you're gonna be at high risk for um, hepatitis C because you're sharing supplies? Or they're throwing out supplies in the community because they don't wanna be stopped and receive a ticket. And so I know it's a challenge to really question. How we've been raised and our thoughts on enabling. Um, but I can tell you from losing three people in the city this weekend. It's worth providing whatever supplies they need so they could be safe and not have to hide behind a locked door and die.
Thank you, Ashley.
I'm going to call for someone to uh, move to extend the meeting. It's nine forty-one. I had thought we were going to be able to make it. On time, but we need an extension, please.
I'll move to extend the meeting till ten thirty.
It's been moved in second to extend the meeting till ten thirty. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
And I would like for us to uh, also um. Put, bring this discussion to uh, to a close. We've been talking.
Okay, I call the question.
Well, you don't have, I mean, if there's.
I would love, I would love for us to vote on this.
No, I think Mr. Will Coxon had um, something. It seemed like he was putting his hand up or getting ready to say something. I don't want to abruptly cut off the discussion, but I think that we need to then to kind of wind down on it if we can.
Yep.
So Mr. Will Coxon.
Sure, I, um, Trishai Duckworth is, is one of the attendees and she sent me a note. Um, essentially saying the same thing that Ashley said, that, that um, they do harm reduction and, and give uh, all sorts of. Supplies that are listed on this um, in Inxter. Um, so the, just relaying that information, but. My, my issue with this thing is just poor language. You know, they should say accept hypodermic syringes, needles and any object. Sold, offered for sale. And if this is taken from state language, then shame on them because this is just poor grammar. Um, and that's what led to my confusion. You know, it's just like putting or in there for some reason is, is. I, I don't get it. That's just bad. Um, but I'm ready to vote on this. I mean.
I, I work.
Please, Mr. Jones Chance has his hand up. I'm calling on him. Thank you.
Yeah, so it sounds like maybe the concerns about this have, are, it sounds like we're good to go and this is. Materially close to what we decided previously and. Am I? Am I right on that? And then we may wanna expand this further at a later date.
Yep.
Okay, and yeah, I mean, yeah, I get like reading through stuff, but like, I look at contracts all day and there's a difference between legal language and. Regular written English and.
Yeah, Michigan.
Reasons for it.
Michigan compiled law is, yeah.
Yeah, and it is, it's not necessarily meant to. Convey what prose conveys. It's meant just to be standard for legal purposes. Um, so yeah, I, I, let's. Let's get this done, please.
Yes, alright. Uh, any other questions, comments? Mr. Morgan, you, are you okay? Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Halanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yeah.
So Jones Chance.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Alright, thank you. And thanks Ashley and Mary for uh, for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's talk later. I wanna make you all comfortable with us, okay? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. Halanga.
Council, moving on to the next section, Board and Commission nominations. Uh, this was table from last week. Council needs to indicate who the nomination will be for the Ipsal Housing Commission. Uh, this was reduced by, one, the Edward Robinson applicant. Agreed to move his nomination to the HRC, which the mayor has made that nomination. So council will need to indicate by voting for the person's name. Uh, they wish to see uh, nominated for the YHC. Legacy. This was table last week to allow time for to review the applications. Are we ready to vote on this? Or does council wanna? Debate this?
Is there, is your hand up, Mr. Morgan? Or you, you're adjusting your um, computer, okay. You're muted. Mr. Morgan, you're muted.
I took a gig to the ceiling. I'm working with two screens. Please forgive me in my, in my silent outburst. You guys, I, ooh, I'm gonna say some things when I get off this line. But I just wanna say, um, I, I, I vote for Melvin Parsons since he is a um. A resident of Ipsal Land. I'll stay consistent with that. No further questions or comments.
So is, is council prepared to vote on this?
I'm prepared. Uh, are others ready to vote or do you want some discussion? Mr. Brown Jones Chance seems ready to vote.
Yeah, we've had a month. Let's do it.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Arson.
Councilmember Somerville.
Um, come back to me.
Mayor Richardson.
Um, Williamson.
Councilmember Morgan.
I would be so hypocritical if I voted for a non-member. I'm voting for Melvin Parsons.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Michael Simmons.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Michael Simmons.
Councilmember Somerville.
And my, the last one.
You are the last council member to vote.
Sorry, I just need a second.
Is that you, Councilmember Will Coxon?
This is a very conflicted decision for me.
Oh wow, boy, we've had some laughs in this meeting tonight, which is sometimes good. Break the tension.
The fate of the free world.
Yeah, I know. I, I do, I do realize that. Um. But if I voted for Williamson, we'd all be deadlocked, so.
You'd all have to vote again.
Yeah, um. Sorry, uh, uh, Simmons.
Good, Michael Simmons is the nomination. Um, with three votes for Simmons, two for Parsons and one for Williamson and one absence. I will let the applicant and the chair of and the, the director.
Also, just for the record, I'm now on a board with Melvin Parsons and I wasn't. A month ago, so it didn't feel right, although I would have supported his nomination. But I also nominated Michael Simmons a month prior.
Moving on to Board and Commission liaison reports. The first.
Mr., before you move on, are we voting on Robinson?
No, he's the only applicant up for that nominee, that seat, so there's no need to.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Um, we got to the next section. The first um, advisory body is Police Advisory Commission.
Um. Okay, can, can you guys hear me? I'm having, um, well, we have our next meeting coming up of this Thursday, no, next Thursday, the twenty-third for, for Whiteback.
HRC.
I apologize, I'm eating. I'm so sorry. Um, I, I missed the meeting this month. I apologize. So I will have to follow up on, on Tuesday with the notes.
Arts Commission.
I am lost in my notes. Um, give me one second.
Well, you, you're not the liaison for Arts Commission either.
Oh, I thought you said Parks Commission. Sorry.
Not quite, that's.
I got time, now you got time.
You know, I didn't make it to that emergency meeting. Um, I was not able to.
Now we're on Parks and Rec and Sustainability.
I, if I may, on the arts, I spoke with um, a couple of, or was in communication today with the. Uh, with Elise and also with um, the former chair Jennifer. And they did last night, um, they did come to a place where they were um, realized that they need to. Uh, look some more at um, what they are really allowed and not allowed to do so that it did, uh. Uh, it raised some questions for them that they will be uh, delving into at the next, at their next meeting, so. Just wanted to share that, so. Mr. Parks, go right ahead.
Mr. Park. That's funny. I, I have notes here from August tenth, so I must have already given you that update in the previous meeting and. Um, I think we have another meeting coming up because there was a. Conflict with the uh, uh, public engagement meeting, so I will update you when we have that.
And Sustainability Commission.
Ah, uh, Sustainability Commission met last night. Um, uh, there was discussion on, let me pull that up. Sorry. A lot happening last night. So there, uh, Bonnie Westler had uh. Proposed a, a, a revision of the bylaws, which was passed. Um, uh, to be more consistent when, take extraneous things out of there. Um, so thank you, Bonnie, for doing that. There was discussion about flood resilience. Um, and there's a, a proposal for a program in terms of. Uh, doing art around uh, city drains so that uh, people will be more aware of, of what's going on with city drains. They're working on that. That'll come forward at some point. Um, it was a resolution um, passed last night. Uh, to support uh, the uh, repeal of the bag ban. Uh, at the state level. Um, so that will be coming forward uh, at the next meeting. I'll be bringing that up and I'll be talking to people about getting uh, another council support for um, getting that on the agenda. Um, uh, there were. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Uh, HTC, I believe that is uh, Councilmember Simmons, uh, Planning Commission.
Uh, we've seen the uh, major fruits of their last meeting tonight. Uh, thanks for your votes, everyone, and uh. They meet again tomorrow.
ZBA.
Has not met.
Moving on to liaison reports, uh, first is SEMCOM.
Uh, there was no meeting. It was canceled.
Watts, I believe is Councilmember Simmons, Urban County.
Um, they had a meeting and basically we uh, heard a report on the um. Oh gosh, the su- of support and funds passed out for um. Um, rent.
Rent eviction coverage, the was that was given. Also, a report on the state of COVID here in uh Washtenaw County. And at that time, it was going up and um there was um. The. Uh Director of Public Health was not there, but she had sent a representative and. And the the emphasis was that they were still pushing um masks and distancing.
Okay, uh, if so, any DDA?
Meeting is Thursday.
Runs the Rutherford Pool.
Rutherford Pool has closed out their season. Um, uh, unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the last uh board meeting because it. Coincided with our uh with another meeting. They closed out the season. It was very successful. Um, it was great to to have it open and have a lot of people coming through there. The uh. They put together a promotional um video that will is is now being edited and hopefully I can share that as a. As a link for folks, uh either an email or at the next uh council meeting. Um, and I'll I'll go from there, but uh it was a very successful year. Uh, lots of people showed up. They gave a lot of uh granted a lot of. Um scholarships um and continue to um support everybody in our community, having a good time on hot dates.
Did they close out the season with a doggy swim?
They did not. They uh had issues previously with uh that event of clogging up their filters and and causing more. More uh costing more than it was worth, really. Um, so they they haven't done that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Council next uh section is council proposed business.
Okay, um. Councilmember Somerville. I'll start at the top.
I have no proposed business.
Uh, council, I'm council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you. Um, just two brief things. One being, I just wanted to um publicly acknowledge um. My leopard coy who has been in consistent communication with me since we um have had several. Conversations over the past um year or two about tree trimming and power outages in our area, particularly in Ward One. Um, she has also communicated that the tree trimming plan for twenty twenty-two has been shared with the city, so. There are more plans to continue um to keep us together, so we have power, lights, and all these things when we have these um. These weird storms that we're having all the time, it seems like now. Um, so I was just really appreciative of her work and um all of her staff. And the the great communication that I've been receiving um throughout this time. And then also. Um, actually forgot to bring this up during our last council meeting, but there has been a lot of feedback from residents of Amesworth Circle. Um, regarding parking on Ferris as you are um entering from Hamilton. So not only, I mean, the the speed bumps are there as you get further into the neighborhood, but um there's a lot of fear from. Drivers and residents around um the parking that happens on the right side of it. Well, I guess it'd be my right from what I'm looking at, but um on the side of the street because that is a narrow road and it curves. Um, and there is a lot of um, there are like bushes and brush around that curved corner as well when you get to East Amesworth. And so um I I'm not really fully aware of the process and figuring out how we may determine that. We would not allow parking on that side, on on either side of the street in that entryway, but it is dangerous. Um, I myself have been going into the circle before and people are flying through and you cannot see them coming. Um, and so a lot of residents have um been expressing their fears around that. And so um wanting to know, you know, what what next steps we'll need to happen for us to figure out what we can do there, because it is dangerous.
Great, thank you. Oh, just um piggybacking on your um. Comments about uh Molly, uh I too have been receiving uh emails from her and she sent one. Um, today, and I'm sure you she might have also uh sent it to you, that they were, that DTE was doing. Uh going, making extra preparation for the storms that will do today and. I guess a couple of other days this week, they brought in four hundred, more than four hundred outside workers um. To work on it and have made some other preparations and again, working on the the tree trimming. So um DT is working with us right now, so so thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, not a ton. Um, I um spoke to some uh. Ward community members and. Um, a lot of the things I've gotten past month have been surrounding uh two of our parks, Park Ridge. And Recreation Park, um primarily with uh noise and garbage and things at the pavilions. Um, and one of the things that has been proposed, and I um I did get your email, Mr. Acres, and I'll respond. Um, was the need for signage. Um, or uh. Maybe just a larger signage with um the park rules. Um, the I know the rules are posted online. Um, and the the issue I think is that you have to be looking for the signs to uh be able to see the ones there are. Um, and it would be good, uh maybe if we posted something at the pavilions. Just so that people know what the rules are and hopefully we would get some improved. Compliance and we wouldn't have to divert so many resources to cleanups and um. And people driving onto the parks and things like that, so um I'll I'll shoot you an email. Um, in response to yours and hopefully we can get that sorted out.
Well, while we're there.
Oh, thanks for the uh extra porta potty. That is, it has not been tipped over yet.
I'm glad you had it yet, but Mr. Uh Acres, we um, I guess. I don't know, maybe back at near the front beginning of the summer or short af- shortly after, uh there was a request for uh more. Uh trash cans in the parks. Uh, and I know, I think you said you had to order some. Where are we on that? Have they been come and are they out? Uh, have they been placed or we still waiting on them or what?
They're not out yet. We're still waiting on them to to come in. We ordered um. Two ninety-six gallon carts, uh which should hold a fair amount of trash in them, so we're gonna put two at each pavilion in the city. Um, those are, this is being ordered. I don't quite have a delivery or they are, have been ordered. I don't quite have a delivery date yet.
Okay.
Once we get them, we'll be deployed uh as soon as we receive them.
Okay, and also uh to piggyback on Mr. Uh Jones Chance's with the sign. The people in um. The neighborhood, the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association, they are still definitely pushing for um. Signs to clean up after your dog for Park Ridge Park. Um. And that is a, that is seemingly a big problem there. And another big sign that says no parking, just and I'm just piggybacking on what Mr. Uh Jones Chance said, but. The the no parking on the grass sign too, so thank you. Uh, Mr. Uh Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll be brief. Um, most of it is just thank you. So um first, I want to thank Chief Hobbs, Captain Schultz, um I was in in a Fire Marshal Pope. I was um, I was grateful enough to be able to do some training with the uh Ibsleany Fire Department yesterday and in the midst of a training. Uh, a a fire came through and so I got opportunity to get on the on the the fire truck and ride out and see how these guys. And uh Superior Township and Ibsleany Fire, I- Ibsleany Township all work in conjunction with um house fires. It was impressive to see. Uh them save the homes and 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 explain what's going on and just uh the camaraderie, so I was come grateful for. The Fire Department. Thanks, Chief, for allowing me to, and hopefully I can get some real training at the latter company, but uh nothing like the best experiences uh firsthand. And I want to thank also um Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. I had the opportunity to do a ride along last night with a deputy uh. Deputy Luke um from a station two over here. Uh, it was. It's not for the faint-hearted when you ran around seeing the operations of law enforcement on a nightly uh basis, seeing how they um. Communicate strategies they use, the information, the technology. It's just, it was wonderful to see and I would encourage many more people to do it, especially those who criticize the work they do. You should, you gotta see it. Um, I think it's full of exhilaration. It was a kind of quiet night last night, thank goodness. Um, I didn't get a a bulletproof vest like I wanted, but I want to thank Joe Myers. I came in and talked with him last uh week about. Just catching up about Water Street, uh the the north, I mean, the park uh development over here in Ward Three. Um, the social equity program, just different things, the deja vu um situation is giving me more uh input and and uh. Again, he has a few things to give me, but I appreciate him being open and welcoming. Um, and last, uh which is good news, uh in conjunction with the twenty-five thousand dollars that we've uh. From the meta, from the marijuana money that we gave to the school, sis- the school uh. Ibsleany Schools um Sports and Arts Program, uh October first, the game against Chelsea of with uh. I've been in conjunction with uh. Superintendent Ross and Principal Reeves and October tenth, they're gonna do is called a a can, a community appreciation night where. Uh, we're gonna present the city, um it is gonna present. At halftime of that game with a big, uh, they call it a comical sized check, twenty-five thousand dollars as a symbol of us connecting with uh the school. And they're gonna offer us a big key uh to education that can kind of confirming our connection and let uh. People within the city to know that the school system is supported by the city and vice versa. Um. And so I just want to thank uh, and I would like someone from each ward if it be possible, um, so like if more, one in Ward Two could uh join us. At a, at the football game or at least step up and come through and um just to show some solidarity with our school system is a be um really important. So I just want to say thank you to all those people who had, um, for me to be able to serve and um, I I have no more businessman.
All right, thank you. That was a good report. Uh, Mr. Will Cox.
Just a couple of things. Uh, it looks like they finished the uh. Uh repaving on Oakwood today, like moments before the uh, they got everything cleaned up just moments before it started raining again, and so people were. Concerned that the drains were covered up and. Uh, it's one thing after another, but uh it's good to see that that was, that is done. The bump eyes are done and the and the pavement paving is done, so. Uh, I want to give you guys a an update on uh Penn Dam. Um. We, in the middle of a series of uh public engagement meetings, we've had three focus groups um that have been poorly attended. Um, the first one were focused on um. Uh, the property owners on the empowerment and they all showed up and then they showed up to all the other meetings and they uh. Spent a lot of time talking so other people couldn't. Um, but then the other meetings did did not, did not get the attendance that we had hoped for. And I think part of that is because it's virtual meetings. Um, there's a meeting that is scheduled for October sixth. It's a town hall and that is also supposed to be uh virtual. Um, we're thinking of uh rescheduling that. Uh, for a couple of different reasons. We'd like to have it in in person um to see if we can draw more people out. Um, we'd also like to uh, we have current studies going on. Um, people have raised questions about. Um, you know, sediments and the effects on the bridges, things like that, and those studies are underway. And we should have uh some data for those um in terms of, you know, how much sediment there is and and what's in it. Um, and we'd like to postpone this next meeting uh until we can have that be information we can convey in there in that meeting. And so I'll keep you guys posted on that, but I'd also like help in getting, getting the word out uh throughout the city about this. Um, this project and and the progress that's that's going there. Um, there is a a landing page on the city website. For Penn Dam, if you just go to the. Um, the webpage and put in Penn Dam, that'll come up. Um, and that has information about the project. There are uh. The two presentations, one that I gave and one that Daniel uh Brown from the Huron River Watershed Council. Um, gave is part of the notes from um. From that meeting, that first meeting. Um, so those presentations are there. They're a good update on what's happening with that project. Um, but I'd also like to solicit uh all of your help for getting the word out for the future meetings, and this isn't. Gonna just end with this next town hall. There's gonna be uh regularly scheduled meetings going throughout because it's the multi-year. Uh, project. Um, and we look to have at least quarterly meetings with updates on the project as it goes forward. We do have DNR funding through next year um to finish up those uh planning studies and analysis to to figure that out. So I'll be in touch with the with all the council members about getting that out. To that end, I attended the Heritage Park. Neighborhood Association meeting and I had the the opportunity to present some of that information to the folks there. Um, they seemed receptive, so. So I'll be reaching out. Thanks.
Okay, um, thank you. I want to thank all council members for their reports, uh communications from the mayor. Um, September is not only Hispanic uh recognition, Hispanic month. But it is also uh September is voter registration month. And with all the the talk or the lack of talk or the lack of action or whatever in um. Washington and also what's going on right here in our own state. Around um, around the whole vote uh issue of voting. And I think it's important and I would like to encourage us all to encourage anyone that we don't, that we know. Uh, and talk to people and find out if they're registered or not and encourage registration for voting. Uh, not just during this month, but always, because uh as we all know across this country. Our voting rights are really in a perilous um perilous position for some. And uh particularly for people of color and for the elderly and for the disabled. Uh, so uh let's, let's all just try to get people, encourage people to register, to vote. Let's um, let's flood the uh the clerk's office with new registrants. And uh it's also National Preparedness Month, and there is a flyer um that he attached here and. It gives um, I thought it was interesting and all of the um, the steps that it talks about. For being prepared for whatever kind of um. Oh, gosh. Catastrophe might come our way, so uh those two things. Um. Heritage Park uh will be having, will be hosting their annual um. Outing on October the ninth from twelve to four, and it's gonna be at Park Ridge Park. Um, it's for those in the neighborhood, but it's also open to anyone that would like to to stop by. Um, it's always a very, very uh nice event, uh always plenty of food, so. Uh, please feel free to stop in. Uh, let's see. The other, I already mentioned the signs and things for the for the park, so I think that's um. That's pretty much some, that's it. I will, I've got some things that I will speak to uh. Mister, to the clerk and city manager about tomorrow, so, but that's it for me. Um, there was some communication from the city manager, but unfortunately, she's not here. I do hope that she will be feeling better. And it's not.
Counsel, if I, if I could phone in for the city manager, I I, again, she does send her apologies. She was not 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 feeling well. But the communication uh for that is, if the Community Benefits Ordinance. Had a, when it was originally approved, had a sunset clause, so this will probably come to council. As uh an ordinance amendment probably would during the October meeting, so. I'm gonna want to start looking that over, see if there's anything that she got changed or. Really, uh, you know, just anything and then get in touch with the city attorneys and we'll we'll uh. Pursue that to get that on for October.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that brings, are there any other communications? Okay, thank you very much, uh, that brings, are there any other communications? Okay, if not, um, who wants to make that motion?
Brian does.
Go to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second? Not really needed, meeting is adjourned.
Have a great night, everyone.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
And Mr. Halinga, I am.